I would like to call the Town of Clayton Planning Board meeting the session at 6:00 PM on the 25th of March, 2024. May we begin with a roll call?
Good evening Chair Moore. I'll do a roll call here, beginning with you sir Chair Moore.
Present.
Board member Williams. Absent. Board member Lee. Board member Applewhite.
Here.
Board member Lipscomb.
Here.
Board member Dupree.
Here.
Board member Gleason.
Here.
Board member Saraski.
Here.
Board member Bland.
Here.
So like a alternate Spence. And Councilwoman Archer. Great, thank you Chair. We have all members, we have a quorum.
Thank you. May we all rise for the pledge of allegiance please? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, infinite, just as far out.
The next item on the agenda is election of Chair and Vice Chair. I will call the Planning Director to the podium please.
Thank you Chair Moore. As a matter of process, this is the opportunity for to accept nominations and motions for both the Chair and the Vice Chair. So as a member, as a, as a member of staff, I can go ahead and open up that motion to entertain those at your direction sir.
Yes sir.
Okay, great. So as Planning Director, I'd like to open any nominations for Chair of the Planning Board.
I would like to nominate Chairman Moore to have an additional term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do you know discussion? I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Chair being the Planning Board Chair again for this coming year, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes Chair Moore. Now turn the meeting back to you and you can now do the nominations for Vice Chair.
Thank you sir. I now hear a motion for nominations for the Vice Chair of the Planning Board.
I would like to nominate Jody Dupree to be Vice Chair of the Planning Board.
We have a motion for Board Member Jody Dupree as Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Lee. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations, Board Member. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, I guess we don't have to move tonight. One item, we'll hold off one minute. I see Board Member Williams is approaching, so we can move him as present.
Okay.
Take a seat in a second. Oh. Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is adjustments on the agenda. Planning Director, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
So it's been brought to my attention that the Carolina overlook is in two places in your agenda. For a matter of clarification on the record, this will be the first public meeting of 5A. So the only adjustment would be to remove it from new business and to confirm that it is the first item 5A in the public meetings.
Okay, so we're going to move it from it's 6A and put it all under 5A.
Yes sir, that is correct.
Okay.
And, and one other point of, of a possibility, our consultant who was going to be presenting in the downtown master plan is going to be joining us remotely. He might be running a little bit behind, so if, to give him some more time, we might do a quick modification to put Mr. Meadows before him, but I'll confirm that when that item comes up.
Okay, but thank you. So we're going to move item 6A to under consolidated under 5A. And potentially we may switch 5C to 5B.
Correct.
Alrighty, thank you. Any other adjustments?
No further adjustments sir.
Alrighty. Board Member Williams is present now, so we can remove him as being present, remove him to being present.
It is noted sir.
Alright, next item on the agenda is 4A, approval of the February 26, 2024 Planning Board minutes. Has every member had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there any corrections needed?
Perfect.
If not, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Have a motion by Board Member Williams to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Bland. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is 5A, 2023-115 CZM Carolina Overlook North Conditional Zoning District with Master Plan. Presenter Stephen Mott, Planner 2.
Good evening.
Alright. Uh, good evening. I'm here to present Carolina Overlook North, case number 2023-115 CZM Conditional Zoning with Master Plan. The applicant has proposed a rezoning of the property, um, a 362.75 acre approximately uh, property from the R8 and R10, just our UDC zoning. The UDO zoning is RMD or residential medium density and RLD residential low density, respectively per our new UDO, uh, to a conditional zoning residential district. The proposal is to see up to 750 single-family detached and single-family attached homes. The former, or sorry, the latter would be limited to 20%, up to 20% of the site. Other uses, uh, in the application include clubhouse, park, parking lot, temporary parking lot, uh, food truck and associated residential accessory uses. The overall density for the site will be approximately 2.1 units per acre. And the location is off of Covered Bridge Road, which forks with O'Neal right here to continue and access is provided throughout the site on Brookhill Drive. Here is the concept plan. As you can see in the shading legend, it offers approximately where the residential single-family units and what the applicant is considering townhomes, uh, or as we like to call them, uh, single-family attached units. Um, you can see the townhome units would be located there, 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 the clubhouse, there. Um. Resource conservation area along the Neuse River is preserved with minimal, um, intersections over that. The only one is really here. And some stormwater control measures are also located throughout the site. Looking at the existing zoning, um, to the north, it's residential large lot or formerly RE. Um, the existing use is residential. To the south, it's PDR and PDMU. So planned districts, residential and, uh, mixed use. To the east, of course you have the Neuse River. Uh, but the residential developments there, you'll see your RLL and then you have some residential medium density right here. And to the left, you also have residential large lot. Um, residential developments. Looking at the conventional zoning versus the proposed zoning, you'll see a mixture of proposed lot sizes uh, from the applicant ranging from, uh, lot width of 41 feet and a minimum lot size of 4,700 square feet all the way up to, um, 8,000 square feet with a lot width of 65 feet. And that's for the detached product where the attached would be a minimum lot width of 40 feet and a minimum lot size of 4,400 square feet. Um, with a range of lot sizes or maximum lot coverages from 62% approximately all the way up to 70% for the single-family attached. The density, as you can see, um, the max density would be at 2.1 units per acre, which is, uh, lower than the conventional zoning districts given, uh, the range of setbacks in the conventional zoning district, um, would then just be 15 feet at the front, five at the side, 11 at side street setback, um, and 10 for the one, uh, 4,700 square foot lot configuration. Rear would be 20 feet. And they have also offered a minimum garage setback of 21.5 feet for the detached single-family and 25 for the attached. In regards to stormwater, water, sewer and electricity, the project will comply with the Town of Clayton Stormwater Ordinance. Public water is available through the town along the frontage. Public sewer will also be accessed through the town and electric service is available from Duke Energy. Uh, regarding landscaping and buffers, a Class C landscape buffer and opaque, um, and opaque fencing is required around the perimeter of the development. I believe that maybe it's hypo. I know that they're offering a 30-foot perimeter buffer along the rear of the property adjacent to the neighborhood developments within the ETJ and would have any supplemental planting, uh, there to meet the Class C landscape buffer. Um, this will be outlined with the conditions of approval as well. And the interior landscaping and street yard trees will be meeting the UDC requirements. For the open space, uh, they are proposing a resource conservation area totaling 70 acres or approximately 20% of the site. There will be a 1,300 square foot clubhouse with meeting space and fitness center and outdoor pool. And they are proposing other active space, uh, that could take the form of walking trails, pocket parks, dog parks and/or a community garden space. And there are no public greenways proposed as part of this development. Uh, as provided by the applicant, here is their, um, open space proposal with active open space. Highlighted here. Um, and passive here. The total required active space is 5.36 acres. They're offering six and a half acres with passive open space at 16.08 acres. They're offering 43.5 acres. In regards to traffic generation, um, it would generate 3,285 daily trips. So for peak hours, it would be about 180 in the morning and 214 in the evening. And just to clarify, the use code for this was, um, senior adult, single-family housing, since the development would be, um, inhabited by at least 80% or more homeowners of the age of 55 or over. The conditions of approval go over this and I know that it's in the applicant's presentation, but I did want to just touch on this a little bit. Uh, there um, improvements throughout the site. Um, this would be Brookhill Drive going up throughout the site. As I showed you earlier, it sort of bisects the proposed development. You can see match line A where this would continue. And it offers different site access with different turn lanes. There's another side access here off of Covered Bridge Road, another one in addition here. In regards to architectural standards, uh, units will be a mixture of one-story and one and one-half story and two-story with a variation of elevations. Units of the same elevation won't be side by side and exterior color schemes won't be repeated side by side either. The townhome units shall be limited to no more than three attached units per building. Um, all homes will have a combination of two or more, uh, materials, stone, brick, lap siding, fiber cement siding, shakes or border bat, board and batten. And vinyl may be used for soffits, fascia and cornerboards. Um. Let's see. I know the applicant has a presentation on architectural standards, so I don't want to necessarily steal their thunder. I'm welcome, you're welcome to ask me any questions regarding that though. In regards to conditional zoning, when looking at the rezoning, we do look at seven different criteria. Um, so the first would be that they're consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the town. Um, based on the guidance in the land use plan, the proposed development is consistent with the density in the low residential, um, low to the city residential land use category. And it does, uh, work to preserve the land along the river as recommended by the recreation and open space land use category. The proposed development is also consistent with the recommendation of primarily single-family detached units and up to 20% single-family attached units. I do have the future land use map here, the site. Sort of this general area where you can see the medium density residential here and low density residential here with the recreation and open space here. Uh, for the second criteria, we look at the suitability of the subject property for uses permitted by the current versus the proposed conditional district. The current zoning district for the proposed development, um, are MDR and LDR, R8 and R10 at the time of the application per the UDC. And it is adjacent to other single-family home developments of similar character and the Neuse River. Staff believes that with the proposed density and the proposed road improvements, the subject property is suitable for the proposed residential development. The third criteria, whether the proposed change tends to improve the balance of uses or meets a specific demand in the town. The surrounding area is primarily a single-family residential. The proposed development consists primarily of residential uses with a clubhouse and active and passive open space uses. The proposed conditional zoning district will allow for additional suburban-style residential development and provide a clubhouse and active open space amenities, which are not present in the given area. The fourth criteria looks at the capacity of adequate public facilities and services, including schools, roads, recreation facilities, wastewater treatment and water supply facilities, as well as stormwater drainage facilities for the proposed conditionals district. The proposed development would be served by Johnston County Schools, uh, Cooper Elementary, Riverwood Middle and Clayton High. Cooper Elementary and Clayton High are on the county's capitalists for 2023 and 2024. Access to the development will be provided by Covered Bridge Road with Brookhill Drive and, and sorry, and an internal network of streets providing access to the homes. The development will be required to meet the town's recreation and open space requirements in section 155.203I. The development will be required to meet the requirements in the town's stormwater ordinance. The property has access to public water along Covered Bridge Road and will install sanitary sewer throughout the development. Staff believes that there is adequate capacity of public services and facilities to serve the proposed development. The fifth criteria, um, it has been determined that the legal purposes for which zoning exists are not contravened and staff, uh, does not believe that the legal purposes for which zoning exists will be contravened by the approval of the conditional zoning district. Criteria six, it has been determined that there will be no adverse effect upon the adjoining property owners unless such an effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. The proposed development will consist of suburban-style low-density residential development. The overall density of the development is comparable to the surrounding developments of the area. And number seven, it has been determined that no one property owner or small group of property owners will benefit material from the change to the detriment of the public. Uh, while the owners or developers may benefit from the development, staff believes that with the proposed conditions, there will be no detriment to the general public. Looking at the master plan approval criteria, we're looking at compliance with section 155-203L and all other applicable requirements of this chapter or analysis and justification for deviations. Consistency with Clayton, the Town of Clayton general design guidelines. Conformance of proposal with stated purpose of requested conditional zoning district. Compatibility of proposed development with adjacent community. Quality of design and ability of overall development plan to ensure a unified cohesive environment at full buildout. Compatible relationships with each component of the overall project. Fiscal impact of the proposal. Providing adequate bicycle and pedestrian links within the development and the adjacent community. And effectiveness with which the proposed proposal protects and preserves ecologically sensitive areas. So, um, your considerations for this, you shall make a recommendation to Town Council on the proposed project, um, also including a written statement on its consistency or inconsistency in reasonableness statements along with your recommendation. Uh, Planning Board may recommend conditions be added or removed. Um, the applicant must agree to any of the changes in the condition prior to council decision. The conditional zoning district, master plan and narrative will be recorded with Johnston County if approved. The conditional zoning district, master plan and narrative will run with the land and they do not expire. I have the conditions of approval here. Some of these are general that we've been through. Um, feel free to stop me and I'm happy to go over them as well. Um, they're included in the staff report. Some of them are new and I have them in red. The applicant, um, has worked with staff on new recommended conditions of approval where they've added some in regards to excuse me, to some of the, um, road improvements. So I do want to go over those. Um, they have now included phases, so phase one and then at full buildout. So the one that's marked out there will be added to full buildout. They've added this improvement with Covered Bridge Road and Smith Drive City Road to monitor the signalization, uh, for improvements for one year. They've also added, um, the construction of a westbound right turn lane and an eastbound left turn lane with 100 feet of storage and appropriate taper there at the side access one and steeple chase driveway number three. Um, let's see. They've also added these improvements to Covered Bridge Road and Brookhill Drive here. And at the side access number two. And, uh, here at full buildout, Covered Bridge Road and Shotwell Road, extending the westbound right turn lane to 200 feet of storage with appropriate taper and extend southbound right turn lane to 300 feet of storage with appropriate taper. And also this, um, stormwater measure expansion, um, some technical lingo for you. But I'm sure the applicant would be happy to expand upon that as well. And also offering a double line silt fencing to control sediment on the east side of the property to keep it from going into the Neuse River and those ecologically sensitive areas. Um, and staff is, um, offering our recommendation. We recommend option two on your sheet. So approval inconsistent with a future land map, land use map. Well, that might sound strange. Um, our reasoning, while it does sort of fit with the typology seen within the future land use map, it is in that split sort of area. So that would allow us to modify the future land use map to be more consistent with the proposed development. So we are recommending approval and that it's inconsistent with a future land use map. I'm here for any questions and I know the, uh, developer has a presentation and I believe the public is also interested in speaking.
Thank you. Any questions of staff from a member of the board? Board member Applewhite.
Stephen, thanks for the presentation. Uh, can you go over that last point again? Um, that it's inconsistent with the future land use map because part of the parcel is in low-density residential and the other parcels in medium density. Um, so if it were all medium density, would it then qualify for, um, being consistent with the So if it were all medium density, would it then qualify for being consistent with the land use map?
So the typologies, it fits with both of them. The low-density residential would seem to be more appropriate. The, the units per acre within low-density residential is three or less units per acre as well as 25% or less single-family attached products, whereas the medium-density residential offers up to, sorry, off the top of my head, I'm thinking it's five or six, three to five. There we go, three to five, and up to 50% of those can be single-family attached products. So really, as long as it's not exceeding any of those, it can fit within that land use typology. But just to be more consistent with the proposed development, we would look at modifying the future land use map. And I know I spoke with Conrad, the planning director, before on this. I'm sure he would also be happy to expand.
Board member Dupree.
Clarification on what you just said, because that doesn't make sense to me. Low density is less than three, 25% or less, single-family attached. This development is 2.1 from what I read, and 20% single-family attached. So what part of any of that makes it inconsistent with the future land use map?
So it is consistent with the future land use map to a certain degree. It's just that it has the mixes in typology that we're wanting to make. Staff is wanting to make it more consistent, and that offers us a chance.
So you're saying by calling it inconsistent, it allows you to make changes, whereas calling it consistent doesn't?
I believe that's correct.
Chair Moore, if I may. So this is something where if you got a, this property is, has three different future land use map designations, two of which are related to the project in terms of the density. So having it inconsistent, we're suggesting that, I mean, of course, the board may decide that it is consistent, but when it's inconsistent, it gives us an opportunity to basically use one land use classification for the entire project. Right now, it's, there are two. There is low density as well as medium density, and, you know, technically, it could be, you could, you could argue that the project meets both of those requirements and therefore it is consistent. Staff is going down the road of inconsistent because that would allow us to, to clean up our future land use map in the future because the Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes requires our future land use map to align with our zoning as best as, as best as possible.
I got you.
Could you go, could you go back one slide to the architectural standards? Oh. Is, is this in collaboration with the applicant?
Yes, they have signed these conditions of approval.
So I see where we're in agreement, we're going to allow vinyl siding on three sides. And in the, in the sister phase, across the street.
They're saying that's not correct.
No. Since vinyl siding will not be used on the front side with exception of trim, okay. So it will be, so.
It'd be in some.
Okay, so I read it wrong. All homes will have two or more default materials on the front lap, vinyl, okay. I just wanted to make sure because I know in the sister phase is cement siding, and, and I know Clayton has become primarily vinyl siding in subdivisions, and I was just trying to check that, and, okay, thank you for the clarification. I read it wrong. Thank you. That was my fault. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. And the applicant did send me their presentation to be able to load on my computer, so I, of course, looked at it, and they do have a number of elevation examples, and they outlined the architectural standards as well.
Well, thank you. That was my first. Any other questions of the applicant? I mean, I'm sorry, of staff, not the applicant. Board member Bland.
Could we go back one more slide?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Number 22, I want to look at that one more time.
And the applicant did get this to us Friday afternoon, and we updated the packets to you all, but you may have not had a chance to see the update.
And there's, there's someone here who can explain that to me?
I believe I will.
Maybe you can.
Charge the applicant explaining that a little bit better than I am able to.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Moore, members of the planning board, and Councilmember Archer. My name is Brandy Vega. I'm a planning and entitlements, is that better? Okay. I'm a planning and entitled man, entitlements manager at Withers Ravenel. This evening, I am joined by Kelly, with Kelly Race, representing the applicant, with Pulte Del Webb. Also here is Colleen Tally, also with Withers Ravenel, and our traffic engineer, Rinald Stevenson, with DRMP, formerly Remy Kemp, and Ward Mariotti is with Sprangler Environmental. So they are all here as experts, and if I can't answer a question, they will. So this community is proposed to be a Del Webb community. This is a well-recognized name around the nation. They are a 55-plus age-restricted community. It's highly amenitized. The HOA does provide lot landscaping and maintenance, so these are individuals who are ready to stop taking care of their own lawn, and so we do have some smaller lots. And these homes are designed for residents to age in place. Now, Stephen, I already walked you through a lot of the master plan. I do want to point out that there are two stream crossings. There's one there, and the other one is towards the south and wetlands impact there. So we have tried to minimize those crossings and have proposed some extended cul-de-sacs to help with that. This is a very large site at 363 acres. I was telling somebody earlier that this is probably about the size of the 540-70-40 interchange for context. If you've driven through there, it's quite impressive. The proposed maximum number of dwelling units is 750, which is a density of 2.1 dwelling units per acre. We do have two adjacent neighborhoods. This is Smith Ridge Estates, and then there is Old Mill Stream. And to the south is the other section of Carolina Overlook, which is Carolina Overlook Del Webb community, and as well, the Neuse River is on the east. I will not repeat the other parts. This is the open space plan as part of our master plan. This layout, again, shows in green the resource conservation area, and that includes flood plain, streams, stream buffers, and wetlands. The general passive open space is in purple. Areas shown in orange represent improved open space, and a perimeter buffer is shown in grayish green. We are presenting the site to you as Carolina Overlook North because currently under development to the south and across Covered Bridge Road is the Del Webb neighborhood called Carolina Overlook. The buildout of Carolina Overlook on the south of the road is expected to be done in 2026. We're excited that the Carolina Overlook project has connected to the Sam's Branch Greenway on the south. So if I could point out that this is a pond that exists in Carolina Overlook's south and a connection to Sam's Branch, part of the East Coast Greenway, and through that covering on Brookhill Drive, residents will be able to get to the Neuse River Greenway. It's a great amenity to all the resident. We begin outreach with the neighbors in October through meetings. We first met with some residents of Smith Ridge Estates and some from Old Mill Stream. We then held our required neighborhood meeting at the Clayton Center, which was very well attended. Since then, we have been talking to and meeting with neighbors. We understand that some residents are here to speak about our project. We can honestly say we have made a real effort to address their concerns with the number of meetings, phone calls, text messages, and emails we've exchanged, and we will continue to work with them where we can. I don't want to repeat any conditions, but the single-family detached will have a two or three-car garage. The single-family attached will have no more than three units per building, and they will only be identified where, identified on the plan as pointed out earlier. The architectural standards, I, some of these pictures are of actual units at Carolina Overlook, and very similar elevations will be available. So I won't run through all those architectural conditions again, but just to clarify, there will be no vinyl siding. Although there is already an amenity center on the south, we are committing to another amenity center on the north with an outdoor pool. Throughout the neighborhood, there will also be walking trails, a fence park, pocket parks, and a community garden. The minimum buffers are a 20-foot type C, except along Old Mill Village boundary, where we're showing a 30-foot under-stirred buffer to be supplemented to a type C. We do have some areas that are larger than 20 feet, but in no case will we be less than To address some of the environmental concerns that we have heard as we have spoken to neighbors, staff, and others regarding environmental impacts, we are requesting those cul-de-sac exceptions to minimize the stream crossings. So we would, let me see if I can get back to a slide so I can point out. So up here, you'll see adjacent to Old Mill Stream, it's called, on this plan, SCM 11. So that's a stormwater control measure, and I will speak to it as much as I am able. If you have further questions, we do have our project engineer here. We have agreed to upsize that detention. So currently, it's required to meet the 110 25-year storm events. It is being upsized to meet the 50-year 24-hour storm event also. So that is something, we heard the neighbors concerned about drainage, and we've agreed to upsize that. We've also heard concerns about the Neuse River, and we're adding additional erosion control with double-line silt fencing to be, to be provided along the grading boundaries along the east side of the property. We are committed to 70 acres of preserved RCA, and as I mentioned earlier, that's wetlands, streams, buffers, and open space at about 50 acres. We did some rough calculations, so this table is not exact, as we have not gotten into site design, but as of now, we are looking at 248 acres that could be built upon, which is 68% of the site, with 39 of that is proposed, 39% of the total site being proposed as buildable with lots and right-of-way. So that's approximately 57% of the total buildable area. And now I'm going to turn it over to Rinald Stevenson to walk through the TIA improvements.
Good evening, Rinald Stevenson. You've heard staff talk about traffic and Brandy a little bit, so I'm not going to get too much into weeds on it. I just want to point out that a TIA traffic impact analysis was prepared for the development. It's been reviewed and approved, and there are several road improvements or signal improvements that are associated with that, and those are outlined in the conditions and with the phasing of the project as well. So just want to point out, there are three access points to Covered Bridge Road. The westernmost access is a full movement, and the easternmost access is a right-in, right-out only access point. We are monitoring the intersection at Brookhill and Covered Bridge for a traffic signal, so we are going to be looking at that. NC DOT does not like to install a traffic signal at intersections if the traffic is not going to warrant it, and primarily the traffic would be from the, the two-side street intersections, Brookhill Drive and the Carolina Overlook driveway to the south. Also want to point out, I think you probably are aware that the Covered Bridge Road intersection at O'Neill Street is being realigned and, and signalized with turn lane improvements there, so that'll be a significant improvement for that particular intersection. But if there's specific improvements, I'll be glad, or specific questions about the traffic study, I'll be happy to go through those. But one thing that folks may be wondering is, did we take into account the traffic from other developments in the area? And the traffic study does do that. We took the development that is approved, some of it's under construction now. We did factor that traffic into the traffic study, so these improvements that you see and that are required are for that future year scenario when those developments are built out. This, this is just a sort of a schematic, and the color sort of illustrates some of the improvements that are being done. The one thing I want to highlight here is that the, you can see that the site itself has a significant amount of frontage. I believe it's close to a mile of frontage from O'Neill Street all the way to the western property boundary, and that's highlighted there in sort of the yellow orangish color. You can see Brookhill Drive in blue as it navigates up through the site, and the green stars are the driveways, so it gives you an idea where the driveway locations are along Brookhill. As I mentioned, two in red is the, is the section of Covered Bridge that is, will be eliminated and relocated to a signalized intersection, and that is underway now. And I'll turn it back over to Brandy, and I'll be available for questions after. And I'll turn it back over to Brandy, and I'll be available for questions after.
So I do just want to add to that, that a lot of the improvements by others are actually being made by Carolina Overlook. So where it says on the TIA improvements by others, many of those, most of them are being done by the south portion. With that, I know we have provided you a lot of information. The team is here and can answer any questions you may have, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Would you stand up just for a second?
Yes.
Any questions of the applicant? Yes. I'm sorry. Corbin McLeeson.
I'm looking at a floodplain map here. Does the floodplain for the 50-year represent the green shape on the map? And if so, what sort of property improvements are made to make sure that residents are not still within a floodplain?
So the floodplain line follows that dark line there. I think, you know what year that is? Think that's a 100-year.
Corbin McLeeson.
My question is about the TIA. Now, I'm new to the board, so bear with me, but I believe that roads are graded, and I would think that there would be a grade now with what we have right now. There'd be a grade at the completion of south and then a projected grade at the completion of north. Am I right, or am I misunderstanding something?
No, no, the, the way the traffic study works is it evaluates intersections, excuse me, and we go from Shotwell down to O'Neill, and we look at the intersections along that section of Cover Bridge Road, and we do look at the, we take current traffic counts at the intersections during the morning and afternoon rush hours, so kind of the heaviest times of the day, and then we analyze those intersections during those times to, and then it is assigned, you're right, a level of service grade, and that is done for the existing conditions that are there today, as well as the future condition without the development in place. And then also, we add the development traffic in, and we, again, it's assigned another letter grade, and then one of the things we do, if that looks bad or there are problems there, then we have to look at improvements. And that's where the improvements come in with turn lanes and traffic signals and the things that we've heard and we've talked about, is to address that and make those intersections work better. Sometimes it's not possible to get an intersection to work perfect or great, but you just want to make it work better than, or the, and the best you can, and that's what a lot of these are supposed to do.
What's the grade you consider acceptable? What are you shooting for?
Well, I mean, in most cases, most cases, level of service D is considered acceptable. There are cases and situations where you would accept a level of service E or F potentially, and those, a level of service E or F is not very, is not uncommon. In fact, it happens all over, really everywhere, particularly during rush hour, and a lot of times where that happens is at an intersection that doesn't have a traffic signal. And if you don't have a traffic signal, sometimes you sit there, you know, to be able to get out. Now, one of the things that these traffic signals will do, you can't, you can't signalize every intersection, but one of the things the signals will do, so if you have signals kind of spaced out at certain intersections, you know, they will stop the traffic along Cover Bridge, you know, at various times, and that sort of creates these gaps in the traffic flow, and then the people at the other stop signs, you know, they can turn out. So it kind of works to help not just the intersection that's signalized, but the other intersections nearby.
Okay, okay. Do we have, do we have grades, projected grades, or we just don't have them yet?
Oh, no, we have, yeah, we have, yeah, I have a lot of level of service grades.
Okay. I don't want to put you through 15 grades, but...
No, no, they, well, I can tell you that there, what's, what's happened is, obviously, under existing conditions, without traffic signals or without some turn lanes, most of these intersections operate very poorly.
Es and Fs?
Es and Fs, Es and Fs. And with the signals and turn lanes, they get much better. And you probably can see that down at Shotwell with the signal that's in there now, the turn lanes, that intersection works better than it did before. So that's the kind of, I'm kind of glad that one's on the ground now, because it's, you can kind of see that that is helping that intersection work better, and those are the kinds of improvements that we would expect, you know, at these other intersections.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Cleeson.
I was reading through the TIA earlier. Is there a reason that it was decided that a 3% growth rate was used rather than a higher number, as we were seeing similar to, I want to say it was like three or four years ago, where Fuqua and Apex were using a growth rate closer to like 8% to 10%? I know we've all been experiencing that the growth rate in Clayton is pretty significant, so is there a reason why 3%? It just seems kind of low to me.
Sure, great, that's a great question, and, and I would agree, 3% on its own would probably be a little low out here, but what we did in the study is we used 3% to project the existing traffic, but we also went and got all the traffic from these other developments in the area, and we added that traffic in, the full buildout of their developments, and added that traffic in as well. So, you know, when you take everything into account, and I don't, I don't know the exact percentage it would be, but if you consider that development traffic plus the 3%, I think it's a very healthy growth of cars from what we actually counted. So I don't, I don't want to say the exact percentage, but it's a, because I can't calculate it in my head that quickly, but it's a, it's a pretty substantial growth.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. Corbin McLeeson.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm sure we'll hear comments from the public shortly, and I know there was some information, and y'all had several neighborhood meetings. Could you talk about some of the requests or comments that you received from the neighbors, and then how you all incorporated it into the plan?
Yes. Originally, we were showing, connecting to Smith Ridge Estates. We learned quickly through the neighbors that the roads in Smith Ridge Estates are private and not in great condition, so they didn't want us to connect to those. We spoke to town of Clayton staff, let them know, like, Smith Drive doesn't even, it shows it as going to the property line, but it stops short about halfway through that parcel. So in communications with staff, they said we could request to not connect to those. We have provided some larger buffers. We had shown a 20-foot buffer originally and have increased it to 30 feet. Again, the SCM was something that we heard the neighbors say that they're already experiencing some stormwater issues, so that was increased. We heard concerns about the Noose River, and we heard that not just from the neighbors, but from pretty much anybody we talked to. So we did add that double-lined silt fencing to address that. We are looking at providing a crosswalk, a high-vis crosswalk across Cover Bridge Road, but again, that will be a DOT call to see if we can do that. That's something we'd like to provide. And we have looked at getting the improvements made to Brookhill Drive before construction starts in the neighborhood, and we are looking at using construction entrances in other parts off Cover Bridge Road where we can to alleviate some of those construction headaches. One thing we can say is that if you go through Carolina Overlook now, any roads that have driveways on them, you'll, you'll see a lot of the construction vehicles parked. Brookhill Drive does not have any residential driveways on it, so they should be internal to the site and not parked along Cover Bridge. Of course, people do what they will do, but the intent is for any of that construction traffic to be parked off of Brookhill. Those are some of the things we've done.
I think, going back, I think we'll come back to the construction entrances, because I think that would be a good idea, and I think that would benefit a lot of the neighbors surrounding. I believe you have an environmental person here that can speak to some of the...
Yes.
I would just be happy to ask a couple of questions about the ecology of the parcel. I'm not an ecologist myself or an environmental engineer, but I think it would be worth illuminating us to a little bit about the site, and then how, you know, the double silt fencing and other things can protect the site, and then throughout construction, how that can, there can be ways to mitigate some of the construction debris and things around the site as well.
Sure. Well, the double silt fencing, as some or most of you are probably, I'm sure, aware, the biggest water quality detriment is sedimentation, erosion, and then the resulting sedimentation. And so doubling up the silt fences is going to significantly increase the amount, the amount of the materials that are conveyed during storm flows that are not conveyed into receiving waters, both the tributaries and the Noose River that they flow into. With regard to the site ecology, excuse me, I'm still kicking my COVID. With regard to the site ecology, there's some probably medium, medium-mature pine plantation along the, I'm sorry, I've drawn a blank on the name of the north-south road that splits the parcel in half, but medium-maturity pine plantation along there, and then some areas of mature mixed hardwoods, as it shows on this map. The most of, the most mature mixed mesocordwood community that's there is on the Noose River floodplain, and that's being entirely protected. And so there are significant amounts of protection. We completed formal protected species surveys for all species that, excuse me, all species that came back, both from the North Carolina Natural Heritage Program queries, as well as communications with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. No, no land species were located. We did formal muscle surveys in the Noose River and surveys in all of the tributaries. No aquatic species were found within the parcel, and I believe half a dozen, no federally-protected species were found at all, and I believe about half a dozen state-protected aquatic species were found during the, the Noose River, Noose River proper survey using scuba gear. So that there, we anticipate no impacts to any protected species, and we've done formal survey, formal surveys for all that have potential habitat within and adjacent to the project area.
And I don't know if you would be able to speak to, you know, some of, if there are existing steep slopes on the property, or how grading to this extent that will be necessary could perhaps harm the Noose without the existence of double-silt fence or with the existence of it?
With regard to the steep slopes, they're mostly in the transition between the, if not uplands, the tributaries, and the Noose River floodplain, and with regard to the, I'll defer to the engineer with regard to the grading plan, but again, that double silt fence is going to have a significant result in significant water quality protection, much, you know, there's existing state requirements for a reason, and they're only a single, single row, and so doubling that up is certainly going to have a significant positive impact with regard to water quality downstream.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? For one more, Corbin McLeeson.
I'm not sure if this would be both an environmental or a grading question, but I do remember reading that a lot of the residents in the nearby area had questions about their well water. Would the proposed changes with the neighborhood cause any negative impact on the well water for all the nearby neighborhoods?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the, their sanitary sewer, typically, the primary impacts to water, to groundwater quality is new septic, and this is going to wastewater treatment plant and being conveyed. I mean, there's really going to be, as far as from my perspective, no impacts, no negative impact to groundwater quality because of community water and sewer.
I have nothing to add to that, just that we, we are connecting to water and sewer, and I'm drawing a blank, but I was going to say something else.
Corbin McLeeson.
Correct me if I'm mispronouncing this, riparian buffers, riparian buffers. Are we still sitting at 50 feet for those? I know there have been some changes, some...
Per the Noose rules.
Okay. Right, yeah, I understand it's a rule. I know 100 is recommended, and I understand 50 is a rule. What if we considered 100? Just throwing it out there, throwing it out there. The other question that I have is, you've got a couple of stream crossings. Is it possible to use open-bottom culverts there?
Open-bottom culverts for stream crossings?
Is that possible to use those? I'm thinking of, thinking of water speed, I'm thinking of, a lot of times culverts are used, and sometimes they're, they're higher than, sometimes even the water, and small animals, aquatic life sometimes has trouble getting through there. Just a question, if that's a possibility.
Gotten into design at this point?
Okay.
But I can say that we are 200 feet minimum off the Noose River.
I think you might be 300 feet off the river, closer to 300, I think, which is, which is great. That's great, yeah.
And just, just speaking generally to your question, the minimum design standards for culverts even are bearing them well below existing channel grade. So there's not, unlike many old culverts that you see, they're not perched. They've got to be put at, the engineer could speak to the percentages that are required either by local ordinances, certainly by state stormwater rules, but it is the, the design rule that the invert, the bottom part of the culvert, is placed well below existing grade, so the, the channel elevation is not impacted, and so the conveyance of aquatic life is not impeded.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Hello, I just wanted to state some clarification about how far away we are from the Noose River. Our closest grading boundary currently is 380 feet from the buffer, and the buffer is already 200 feet from the new stream, so. And then if you wanted, just our closest lot, our closest lot is 470 feet from the buffer, so that's another 200 feet, so 670 feet total. And then other SCM gradings, so the other, I guess, like, two near the clubhouse, those gradings are about 550 feet graded, that, you know, the furthest point away is 550 feet away from the buffer.
Thank you. We're now moving to the public comments phase. Before we start that phase, I just want to reiterate, go over and read a statement. I'm James Moore, the Chair of the Town of Clayton Planning Board. This planning board is composed of volunteer members of the public appointed by the Clayton Town Council, and is responsible for providing recommendations on key amendments to the zoning and accord of ordinances, including tax amendments, rezonings, and conditional zoning districts. Any decision made here tonight is a recommendation for the Town Council and will ultimately be decided by that body. While we welcome public involvement and discourse, please wait until invited to speak by the Chair. Prior to addressing the board, speakers are asked to provide... Prior to addressing the board, speakers are asked to provide their full name and address. Speakers will be allowed a maximum of time of three minutes and may be asked to stop if they go over. At this time, we will entertain the first member of the public that would like to speak. Please come to the podium and provide your name and address. And you can adjust the mic as you come to the podium. Any member of the public may come to the podium at this time.
And Chair Moore, if I may, for the record, I'll be keeping time on my phone with the three minutes when the, when the citizen speaks.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. How you doing?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Wheaton. I reside at 700 Christopher Drive in Old Mill Stream. And I just wanted to call to attention one of the items that was discussed about interfering with the groundwater, because Old Mill Stream is on well water as well as private sewer. I appreciate that there have been a lot of measures taken to ensure these double silted fences and all this other. However, I don't know how much was taken into effect when you've got, you know, 750 new homes, double, say there's two cars per home, minimum two cars per home. You've got cars that don't keep up with their maintenance, that runs into the groundwater, that runs off of driveways, you've got their pets, you've got all of this other to take into consideration, where at some point, I believe that will impact the Noose River, number one, and number two, the well system that we draw from right now. So I would like to just propose that maybe that is open for a little bit more discussion and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the only member of the public who would like to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
My name is Chris Casey, 410 Christopher Drive. You know, coming from Florida, I'm not naive that driving down that beautiful road into our neighborhood of Old Mill Stream was one day gonna be developed. And the one thing that I would like you guys to take into consideration is, let's just talk about theme of neighborhood and theme of the lot sizes and that. If you look at some of these slides, and you look at Old Mill Stream, you look at Smithfield, then you look down there, that's low, medium, or whatever, that's pretty high density. I don't see where, what I would say and what I would ask for is, we've had a lot of people work really hard, and Polte was very good with them, about straightening the road and all that. But 30 feet of buffer, to me, is just not enough to keep that character of that neighborhood from just looking like, you know, give us a little bit of a buffer there, so it looks like you're going into our neighborhood instead of just riding through a continuation of a neighborhood. I mean, because that's what the difference is, if we're gonna, you're talking about Old Mill Stream, I don't know if you guys have even been back there, one and a half to three acre lots, you know? Smithfields are even bigger lots. We're talking 2, 2.1, you know, per, per acre. So I would just ask that you take in consideration for everybody in Old Mill Stream, especially the people on Michael Way. I mean, when you look at the one drive, it's gonna drive into one man's, basically, the way that road's angled, it's pretty much gonna go right into the back of his house up there on the top. So I would ask that you guys take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jean Hoyt. I live on Michael Way, and it's my house that the road will be going right up against our pool fence, which is our back boundary. Being a resident of Old Mill Stream and specifically Michael Way, our home will be the most impacted by the proposed Polte-Dell Webb development, as it has been submitted to the planning board. As you can see by the turnout of many of the Old Mill Stream and Smith Ridge residents, we have many concerns and questions. The Plan A proposed to the residents of Old Mill Stream included, as you may already know, the following. A 200-foot undisturbed buffer bordering all Old Mill Stream properties in Carolina overlook north. No houses or roadways behind the houses on the south side of Michael Way and bordering identified wetlands. No connection to Michael Way, but a cul-de-sac added by the Polte-Dell Webb group at the end of Michael Way, and a fire hydrant that was promised to us by Dell Webb near the property lines of Brook Hill Drive. This was a huge and encouraging possibility that was floated to us by Polte-Dell Webb, but required us to get 100% of Old Mill residents' signatures on a petition that was composed by their lawyer, and for us to sign off on a lingering easement left by the owner of the property in question and the development of Old Mill Stream, as to provide access to the homes in Old Mill Stream being built. And even though Polte knew this was an impossible achievement, they worked with us. The lawyer researched all the titles of the homeowners, provided information, provided us with an in-house notary, and offered their sales office as a place for residents to sign. This was all volunteered by the Polte-Dell Webb. None of it was requested by the Old Mill Streams. We appreciate that. January 29th, the signing of the petitions began and continued to the proposed deadline of March 11th by Polte Group at noon time. In that time period, we had only 40 residents sign. Our Old Mill Stream HOA Board sent out a corrected letter of the misinformation they had previously sent to all Old Mill Stream residents via the U.S. mail. This letter was received by most of the residents on March 6th, five days before deadline.
Ma'am, thank you. Your time's up.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, because there's a whole lot more, but I'll have my husband continue it.
My name is, my name is David Hoyt, and I'm the house that sits right there, where that road is right up against our house right there. On March 6th, to the cutoff date of March 11th, we received 151 additional signatures. Many, many people took enclosed petitions in their letters and had them signed and notarized. These were dropped off at our house mailbox and at our door. Many, many people contacted us wanting to sign even after the deadline. That tells me more than, we had more than, close to 80% out of 100, out of the, of possible 246 signatures. We were promised a 200-foot undisturbed buffer and a separation and protection from the two developments. We do not want the roads and houses behind Michael Way. They do not want the connection to Michael Way to the subdivision. Did we think we would get 100% signatures to sign off on the easement, to straighten the S-turn, which is up above, up above the, by the power lines on top of the hill? We know it was gonna be a tough battle to do that. We had a lot of people that were, had a lot of questions. They were confused about this easement. So the easement was, was gone away with, it was, you know, the state took over the highway back in the late 90s, and so everybody didn't know, hardly anybody knew the easement was there. But it was never, it was never signed off, so we had to suffer for that. In the master plan submitted by Polte-Dell Webb, they stated that proposing to build 2.1 homes per acre, and not sure what a tenth of a home is, perhaps a garden shed. Then that's got a question here. If you've got 2, 362 acres, and about a little over 100 of that is wetlands and open space, when you do the math on that, it doesn't equal 750 homes. It's a lot less than that. So that means more houses, and my, my math here is gonna be more houses per acre. Given the fact there are 300, I got here 355 acres at state, of roughly about 125 acres are declared wetlands that cannot be built on, that leaves 200 acres to build a home on. Multiply that by 2.1 homes and add, add that, and comes out to about 420 homes. There's something maybe I'm missing here, I don't know, maybe someone needs to explain that. Several of which are sewn, will be proposed townhomes in units.
Sir, sir, thank you, appreciate it.
So?
Thank you. Or is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
Paul Robinson, 2304 Smith Drive. I have a question about the buffer surrounding the additional property. The buffer that they listed in item 20 on the conditional zoning, it only addresses Old Mill Stream. When we were talking about it with the developer, they promised that buffer would cover all the external property on Smith Drive, or on Smith, Smith Ridge Estates and Old Mill Stream. So it's just a concern, the extended buffer size.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Yes?
You've already spoken.
I didn't get my whole three minutes, did I?
You step down.
Oh, so I have to, I can't come back up?
No, ma'am.
Oh, so somebody else needs to come up and finish reading this?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Patty Hubert. I live on 114 Michael Way. My property abuts the proposed development. I'm about the third house in on the right. We moved out to Michael Way to live out in the country and have some wonderful, nice occlusion, live in with nature. We enjoy our one acre property that we have out there now, and I have to insist that it's an inconsistency, really. I've heard the word consistent housing a lot between the proposed Polte development and what we have. We have custom, single-family homes. We don't have homes with certain frontages and so forth, between a variety of six to seven different styles. They're custom. They're built on foundations, they're not built on slabs. It is quite a bit different, and we all sit on about one acre or so. Many of us on Michael Way have pools in our backyard, and we love to enjoy the privacy of nature back there. Something I'd like to, you just consider heavily is the 200-foot buffer. 30 foot is nothing, going from one subdivision to the next. 200 foot is reasonable, it really isn't that much, but 30 feet basically is probably from where I am to where you are. And it's just unrealistic going from that type of a subdivision into, into ours. We need something that's gonna distinguish it quite much, you know, larger space, and leave some trees and undisturbed buffer in that 200 space. Something that was not mentioned was grading, mass grading. I don't know, I don't know if someone could address that. When the Polte-Dell Webb subdivision took place across the street on the southern end, we saw the mass grading go on. It was during the summertime, went on for quite a bit of time, like it is now, during those very, very hot days where we get between 90 and 100 degrees, all you see is red clay in the air. We have pools in our backyard. What's gonna happen when that, there's no trees there, and all that soil comes up over to the air into our pools in our backyard? Again, another reason to have a larger buffer. There's about seven or eight homes, I guess, in thinking about the pools at least, I think, seven or eight homes on Michael Way that have pools. So we'll all be impacted by that. Blasting, another concern that hasn't been brought up. There are some very, very steep slopes. If you all have ever had a chance to drive down Brook Hill, I would encourage you to do so if you haven't, and just look from the side, you can't really tell. But there are some very, very steep slopes back there, they're gonna be probably filled and graded. I don't know if there'll be blasting going on or not, but that could potentially also affect our community well. We would like to have some more information and consideration on that. This is gonna be a clear-cutting deforestation of probably 400 acres plus on a natural heritage land, the only natural heritage land in Clayton. If you are not familiar with natural heritage land, please look it up. It's the only one in Clayton jurisdiction right now. And back in 2001, Henry Look, uh, Lookland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hello, I'm Charles Tindall. I live at 101 Michael Way, across the street from Dave and Jeannie. I have been a resident of Clayton for, since 2003 with my wife. I used to be a UPS driver and covered north side of Clayton from Bojangles all the way down to Southwick. I have seen this county destroyed by clearcutting and just influx. Now, Clayton is a wonderful town. We want to share it. We expect there to be development. Let's do it sensibly. Now, the math doesn't add up like Dave's talking about. If you got approximately 355 acres, you got 155 acres of wetlands, that's like buying a sack of potatoes, and 40% of them are no good. You're not gonna cook them, you can't use them. So why are you figuring in house density on unusable land? Because my math teachers wouldn't have a fit. I think the, the TIA study for what the number of trips on Brook Hill are grossly underrated. I would expect them to be three times what it is. Retirees get bored, they go. And as far as the new homes, you're gonna have retirees over 55 in townhomes? Do they have elevators? Do they have the amenities to get them up and downstairs? Okay. Now, something that really bothers me is the hardscape. If my, our home is directly down the watershed coming out of Brook of Smith Ridge, now you take all these houses, all these hardscapes, consider even with the retention ponds, what's gonna end up down that hill into the creek and into the noose? Patty was right. Grease from cars, you got homeowners, they're gonna go out there and re-fertilize their front yard, even though they've got a landscape coming, because it's not green enough fast enough. And it's gonna be too much, it's gonna be down the hill, it's gonna be in the noose. The land can't handle it. Also, when it comes to the, the blasting and the grading, we already have a water problem with the wells, with aqua. We've had, they had to install radon, radon filters. Now, you get all these vibrations, what are they gonna shake loose? Are we gonna end up with another radon situation? There's many facets here. Let's use the land, we're not trying to keep out people, we're not trying to keep out. Clayton's wonderful, I love it, it's home. But use it sensibly. Make the land and the development fitted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lisa Levin, and I live also on Michael Way with my husband.
Chair Moore, if I may, for the record, ask persons that are speaking that please include their address rather than pointing.
Yes, ma'am. Could you give you an American?
127 Michael Way.
Thank you.
Yep. So just finishing off on here is, we as Old Mill Stream respectfully ask the Town Planning Board and Council that they require Polte-Dell board and council that they require Pulte Del Webb to resubmit a new master plan that grants Old Mill Stream residents the 200 undisturbed buffer along our boundaries of Old Mill Stream properties. As was mentioned before, the houses along Michael Way on this side will definitely have a great impact. We would like no, no homes or roadway parcels to Michael Way. Include the promised cul-de-sac at the end of Michael Way so we do not see other cars coming through. Include the promise, sorry, no construction vehicles entrance at the point along Brook Hill Drive. That will be a nightmare for everybody that is trying to come out of Old Mill Stream just to get to Cover Bridge Road. Never mind the traffic of all the other cars that are coming. And then we have to sit there and wait for the construction. Let's see. We know this development of this parcel of land is inevitable. A 55 and older community is most paddable, thank you, thus far in the possibilities. We know that this deforestation will disrupt our lives for a long duration in natural heritage land in the Noose River impact, and the natural habitat will be lost forever. And like my neighbor said, when you go up Brook Hill, it's like a different place. You're still here in Clayton, but it's a different place, and that will be ruined. And when you see the sun come up, and it's just a beautiful thing, you could just, you go up that Brook Hill and you forget about everything. Now, that is not going to happen. Please take our requests and concerns very seriously so that we, in fact, will have good neighbors bordering Old Mill Stream and can live next to one another in harmony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Mills, 2205 Smith Drive in Smith Ridge Estates. I want to be clear, you're not going to be coming into our neighborhood connecting? Okay, we would like that too.
Ma'am, ma'am, just speaking to the microphone, please.
We would like that 200-foot buffer too, and not just 30 feet on that side. I have a concern with the traffic. When we're coming out of our neighborhood and you look to the left on Cover Bridge Road, at one time the DOT graded it down, but they didn't grade it down enough, and you cannot see what's coming well enough. And if you're coming off a city road trying to get into our neighborhood, you cannot see. And traffic is flying through there, and it is hard getting in and out, and you're going to have more accesses going into this development, and it's going to be more congested and more dangerous. I don't know what you're going to do about that, but I think you're putting, going to allow too many homes on that property. If you could have some really nice homes on there with an acre, nice homes, instead of these little crackerjack box things crammed together like sardines in a can. Thank you.
You're welcome. And is there any other member of the public who would like to speak?
Hello, my name's Benjamin Stiff. I live on 105 Michael Way. I'd like to thank you for your taking this matter seriously. I grew up in this community. I moved here when in 1991, I was about four years old. After my military service, I returned back to Clayton for the aesthetics. This development is damaging the aesthetics for the members that you have in the community now. A lot of us aren't trying to stop this from happening. We just want to protect what's important to us, which is the aesthetics of our, of our town. With all the members that are moving in, I'll welcome them with open arms and southern hospitality like we always have. But I'm just asking, did you consider the community members that you have now? And, you know, I will never hold any negative hospitality against any of the members of Del Webb. If I see them in the grocery store, I'll give them a hey, how you doing? And talk about their day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak on this matter?
Good evening, board members. My name is John Scarp. I live at 1304 Noose Ridge Drive in Clayton. Good evening, once again. The thing that's important to me as a member of the town of Clayton is to remember that we're part of a larger community, the community of North Carolina. This is a beautiful place. The thing that disturbed me is in every development that I have seen come before this board and before the town board, before this commission, they clear cut. And clear cutting is something that has to be stopped because it is destroying the character of Clayton, and it's, it's destroying the environment for all of us. So Del Webb is a fine institution. I actually considered buying property from Del Webb. I chose not to because of the clear cutting. It's hot in Clayton in the summertime, and if there are no trees, it's even hotter. Plus, we don't have the oxygen, we don't have the nitrogen, we don't have the things that trees provide for us. So don't let them clear cut. Let them build, but no clear cutting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Chair, now I'm going to close the public comments. I'll now turn it over to... Before you come up, hold on just one moment. I'd close public comments. Let me get the will of the board, so they would allow, would allow you to speak. What is the will of the board? Yes, ma'am, you can come forward.
My name is Kelly Johnson. I live at 153 Claire Drive in Old Mill Stream. I am originally from Clayton, and my husband and I chose to move back to Clayton after living in Raleigh for a while, where I went to college and I went to school, for the drive-in to Old Mill Stream, the neighborhood in general, the decent sized lots, the privacy, the family feel, and the character in general. With the proposed plan here today, kind of repeating what my neighbors have said, but I think it is important to hear. There is no need for Carolina overlooked to connect to Old Mill Stream. We would request that the town consider requiring Pulte to submit new plans or make their recommendation, modify or reject these plans to include that cul-de-sac or just to have no connection in general. There are two separate developments if this is developed, and they should remain as such. There is no reason for them to connect. As you've heard, as well, it is possible for there to be a 200-foot buffer between the two neighborhoods. There are plans drawn up for that, and there is a way for that to happen, and I think that is important for that to happen, as you have heard here today. Without either of these things, at a very minimum, this does harm Old Mill Stream neighboring, other neighborhood as well, but very much so Old Mill Stream and Michael Way, as you have heard. Whether the easement is released or not, I think that plans can be drawn up to include these things. It's just whether they will be. As you have heard, the nice lady behind me say that they will work with the neighbors of this proposed development. This is where they can work with us, and this is where the town can work with us, to include these things that are very minimal in the proposed development that would make a drastic impact for those who do live in Clayton, those who have lived in Clayton, for neighborhoods that have been here since the early 1990s. My husband and I are younger that live in the neighborhood, but there's a reason why we moved to Old Mill Stream and a reason why we moved back to Clayton. And I think that the current residents of Clayton should be considered, should be respected, and just cared about more than a development that is coming in that is new. I think that that sends a public message as well, in whether you consider the current residents or not. And so I would just like to echo what my neighbors have also said, and for those, everything that we've asked for to really, really be considered. Thank you.
Please, no clapping, Chair. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak? Thank you. Closing public comments. I'm turning it over to the board for their consideration. Any comments on the board? Boardroom Applewhite?
I think the, the challenge, obviously, with the, there was the road realignment opportunity presented is that there was a plan put before the neighbors that I think many of them would get behind, and then it was, requires this insurmountable task to get 100% of the signatures, and I, I think is, is challenging, and it's frustrating in that, that I think that could have been a middle ground, but it doesn't seem like that is available at this point. And I think that as the, as the board considers this, we should look at some conditions to make it easier for the neighbors to recognize that there's going to be a development, whether, you know, we all want this product in particular. I think personally, this would be a great opportunity for a conservation subdivision that's mentioned in our new UDO and that works with the landscapes and has nicer houses on bigger lots. But frankly, the, the property owners, developers want to do something different, and they think that the property suits that. So where we can, you know, marry together, a compromise, I think, would be warranted. I, I don't know what would be amenable to the, to the applicant as far as buffers, as well as construction entrances and any, any sort of reassurances to the neighbors, that they won't have to worry about large construction equipment inhibiting their exit entrance into their neighborhood. I recognize that it is a beautiful drive up, and I think it's challenging to see that change, but I think we can welcome it in a way that marries together some of the negotiation from the developer and appeasing some of the property owners that are here. I, I don't know if we should request particular conditions, but I just want to put that before the board before we move forward.
As I was listening to everyone, I grew up here in Clayton as well. I'm pretty sure that everyone here now considers this home. We do volunteer, we do live in your neighborhoods, and you do have a beautiful neighborhood. So we understand the 200-foot buffer you're looking for, 200 feet, I'm sorry, the wetlands and the environmental impact, and I'm pretty sure that your town council people that you selected, we, we all have been working very hard to codify Clayton, right? And so our job is just to, if it fits the zoning, to say it fits the zoning. But we want to keep Clayton a small-town feel. That was one thing that we hear every time development comes, and, you know, as you stated, you know, we're going to grow. But I think that we do need to take in consideration that small things that we can do, if you can go from 30 to 200 feet, I think that, you know, the developers, working with, you know, the council and with the community, some compromise should be able to come so that everyone can get what they need.
Yes, Boardroom Dupree?
To the applicant, is there any flexibility on the 30 feet that you've got? Can you, can you speak to that?
The 30 feet was an additional 10 feet from the, I'm sorry, my name is Kelly Brace. I'm with Pulte Del Webb, and we are located at 1225 Crescent Green in Cary, North Carolina. The 30 feet was an additional 10 feet with, with the agreement that we would meet with the homeowners, that we would buffer it as far as keeping what's there, if, you know, if that's what they prefer, or plant, or a combination of both. Even we talked about fencing, we, we talked about a number of things, but we wanted it to be neighbor-led and for them to tell us what they wanted. We haven't had that meeting yet. They haven't provided a time for us to meet them on site, but we're more than happy to do that. But there's a certain amount of depth that we have to provide for the lots, to have a lot back there at all, because these are age-in-place units, and we have a strict grading criteria because for 55 and older community, you cannot have, you know, large, large grade on these lots. And so these are our largest lots that we provided out there. These are greater than 8,000 square foot lots that we're proposing back there.
So there is no flexibility?
Well, there's been a lot of flexibility over the last, since last November, since we've been working. We have added that already. There's, so beyond that, if, if we made it any larger, we wouldn't be able to develop the land in that area.
The, the slide to the applicant, on your buildable lots, on the acreage, you said it was going to be 2.1 units per acre, but you were only building on, what was the quantity of acres?
The percentages. Do you have those?
Not the percentages, the...
Acreage?
The, let's just go straightforward, just not a percentage, just straightforward in quantity of acres.
Is the board able to see the screen, the computer? Can we work on that?
Yes, we're seeing the same thing you're seeing.
The area of the proposed building on is 141 acres for lots in right of way. The 141 acres is proposed buildable area out of 363.
So the 141 includes lots and roadway, though?
Yes, sir.
And that'd be 750 units total?
Yes, sir, as a maximum. Uh, I don't know. I don't have any questions about it.
The townhouses, are they single level or multi-level?
Sue, these are just, they are single story. There is an option for a loft if, if the buyer chooses that, but they are, they're not, all the livable space is on the first floor.
I'm recollecting, just a couple, just a couple of months ago, when we were looking at the Vincent Road project and compatibility with the lot size and the size of the units because of the large lots. And I know council just recently, going back and forth with that developer, they just approved that, going back and forth. But initially, the recommendation from the plan, from staff was not to approve that for lack of, because it wasn't compatible due to lot size. But here, we got two neighborhoods with large lots, and staff is recommending this one. And so I'm, I'm almost... Their staff said it was incompatible, but we recommended it. Here, you got two neighborhoods, in, right in the middle of two neighborhoods of something very similar. Staff is recommending it. Even though the plan... Even though the planning board will make our independent decision and council will make our independent, we'll make an independent recommendation and the council will make the final decision. We're not getting consistency from staff on the recommendations because if you look at the Vincent Road project with the large lots in the ETJ, and then the smaller lot sizes from that project, staff didn't recommend it, but we did. But this one, you have estate lots in two different neighborhoods. And it says 2.1 per acre, but really, you're really talking, when you look at the actual acreage and the usable acreage. It's going to be, and just, if you just look at, if you just use what's across the street, you're really looking at a very, if you just use the sister neighborhood across the street, there's no way that what's going in is compatible with this, what's there. I mean, we all can see that if we rode by there.
I don't think that the, so then here's, I don't think that the, and, and I'm not a builder, but when, when they talk about the acreage and how many are going to be an acre, the word usable is not in that total acreage. So I think our standards of whatever the standard must be for a certain amount per acre includes the fact that a, that a development is going to have unusable acres in it. So you can't start pulling out the roads and the wetlands and all of that, figure out what you got left, because then the standard we set to begin with is not based on that. So I think within that range, every development is going to have.
No, no, I wasn't looking at that. I was looking at actual compatibility, what's going to be on the ground when it's finished, just looking at, just like looking at what would have been on Vincent Road when we were looking at the townhouse mix and the actual space, looking at what's going to be on the actual ground and compatibility, what's there between.
I don't think, I don't think you're ever going to get something to be built compatible necessarily with whatever development is next to it, is compatible in that development with what our standards are. But what's built right next to it is going to be, you know, you got places where people have five-acre lots and they're never going to build anything around it that's five-acre lots. So you're never going to get that compatibility, I don't think.
But this is definitely...
It's different, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's nowhere near compatible.
Chair Moore, if I could offer a point of clarification for you, um, because you did mention the Vincent Road project that was recently voted on, that really is not an apples-to-apples comparison. The inconsistency mentioned in the staff report for that application had more to do with the fact that that property was outside of our ETJ. So if you'll recall, that inconsistency had to do, that incompatibility had to do with the future land use map, that parcel wasn't even on the future land use map. So there is consistency in what staff is saying between the two applications.
And also, Chair Moore, if I may also, subsequent to your meeting, the applicant did alter their plan following their, their town council meeting. They, they worked with staff, they removed the single-family attached housing product from their master plan and they went back before the council and, and staff did recommend approval. I think we still recommend approval inconsistent with the, with the future land use map because there was no future land use map designation at that time. And to articulate, you know, the staff's recommendation is not intended to throw anyone off or to be, uh, you know, saying yes here, but no here, but we look at every proposal as an individual request. This is a case-by-case conditional rezoning request. We do our best to provide you with our recommendation based on the future land use map, based on the 2045 comprehensive growth plan, um, and also our, uh, interactions with the applicants through the master plan conditional rezoning staff review process where we formulate the, the conditions that, with the staff. And that way, when you all have this before you, you have both staff's recommendations as well as a work-through kind of massage master plan, as well as any conditions that, that would be helpful for the project's success. So if I can offer that to help clarify, as well as Councilwoman Archer's comments as well. Thank you.
Any other comments from, yes, family?
I like the Delwell, Del Webb product. I think they do a nice job, what they do, and, and I would really love it if it were in another place. Just as my fellow board member down there mentioned, um, the clearcutting, the extreme grading, and the fact that it is such an environmentally sensitive area are concerns for me, whether or not that matters to anybody else, I wanted to just go on record saying that.
I do concur with that. I live across-street with the expansion of the South Project and the clearcutting. And I guess if you, if you don't, if you haven't seen, witnessed their clearcutting, I can understand their fear of what they can expect. So I do concur with you on that.
Sir.
So I want to, I want to add a, kind of a viewpoint to this that was mentioned a little bit, I think, by Commissioner DePree earlier, that the, the word I want to use is transition. Okay? This town is in a transition right now. Okay? And there's, there's some of these properties that if we expect anyone to develop one acre to two acre to five acre lots on anything like this, we're fooling ourselves. Okay, that's number one. Number two, there is a plan by the MPO to widen this road, Covered Bridge Road, pretty much all the way from Shotwell all the way through Richard to Four Lanes. So the expectation is that there's going to be more coming to this area. That is an expectation from the regional transportation authority. So we need to transition from some larger lot neighborhoods to these larger roadways. And the best way to transition it is through potentially increasing the density. Now, we're looking at density overall and that's, as we talked about, when we look at density, it's overall property. It's not usable property, it's overall property. If there was no wetlands on this property, if this was not right against the river, then we'd be looking at this differently. But because they have a lot of wetlands and then because there is a lot of buffers, we're looking at this in totality, that is the rules that we abide by. That is in our U D O, that we have to do. So the density is 2.1. That is, that is, that is, that is what it needs to be. This development effectively transitions from larger lot neighborhoods to a more dense roadway network that is going to happen. And as all of you know, as I said in the last two meetings that I've, that I've joined you all at very happily, by the way, that rooftops bring services. And as a town grows, we grow with services to our, to our constituents, to our members who live in the community. And as I mentioned earlier, someone, we, we don't, we wouldn't see the hospital on 42 grow as much as it did if we didn't have rooftops in the area. So what we're seeing here is an increase in rooftops, meaning a density that is on the land use plan that is a transition as we need to see it. So what I'm saying is, is that while the lots may not match exactly, we're, we're getting the same thing out of it, that, we're getting the best out of it that we can with a good product, which by the way, the property values on those lots are probably going to be higher than any of the property values that are currently on the neighborhoods around them. So while the lots are bigger, if you look at the property values, they're, they're actually selling the houses across the street for more than the houses are worth in these two neighborhoods that are right next to this property. So the property value, and I just looked it up a few minutes ago, so you can say it's true or not, I literally just looked it up a few minutes ago. So the property values are higher. Okay? The other thing that people need to realize, and I, I live in a neighborhood and I have a house that has almost an acre, and my neighbors freak out if they see a construction truck anywhere near the neighborhood. Hear about it from everyone. I know that the property that's between me and the main road is going to be developed. I know that the 300 acres across the street from me is going to be developed eventually. It's probably going to be developed with something more like this. I have accepted that because I know that's how we grow. That's how we're going to grow the town, that's how the area's going to grow, that's how the county's growing, that's how I get services closer to my house. And so while, yes, there are some, some lands that we see as, that in our backyard, that I think a lot of people see a big, wide-open land and it's great and it's great amenity, I've heard, last 25 years of my career, I, I love having that view in my backyard. That's not your property. That's someone else's property. We have one right in this country is to ask to sell our property, to be able to do it to meet the land use plans that we have. And that's what we're doing here. So when you, when you think about this, just think about transition, transition in two ways. One, we are transitioning from these larger lots to a more, to a larger area where there's more traffic. It's going to happen. And two, the town is transitioning. We're transitioning to a place where in order to have more rooftops and to be able to do more things, we can bring more services with those rooftops.
Thank you. Board Member Disco?
Yes, I think that this is compliant. I think that staff's recommendation is correct. The only thing that I have heartburn with is the developer offering a larger buffer for 100% compliance, because I feel like if they'd have given you 100% compliance and the town council would have approved it, y'all would have been taking a reduction in density. And that's what I don't understand. Yes?
Um, that is not, um, Sue, it, the whole point of, it was not our idea that it had to be 100% signatures. It, because that is an easement that ran with the land, that was, um, there's an easement under Brookhill Drive that was, um, given by the Earp family to the developer of the O'Mill Stream neighborhood. It was never terminated for whatever reason, which is very unusual once DOT builds the road and, um, takes over the maintenance of the road and the right-of-way. Um, so because that easement ran with the land and it has been subdivided 120 times, our attorney informed us that it cannot be terminated unless every single signature of every single property owner was obtained. And the only reason we were doing that is if we went, if we paid and constructed the straightening of the road, we would be able to build more homes through there if the easement is terminated and we can make up for the density that we were losing against Michael Way. That was the agreement very clearly stated from, so that we were making up the density.
Okay, so it was more towards the easement?
Yes, sir.
Termination than it was just the compliance of the neighborhood?
Yes. So our attorney had informed us that that had to be done. We were just as unhappy about it as everybody else was.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Anybody else? There are no more comments, entertain a motion?
Chair Moore, staff does, did print out the, the inconsistency or the, the consistency statements sheets for, for the board. Steven Maugh is handing those out.
Chair, okay, that's one more, say one more thing real quick.
Yes, sir.
So I, I want, I don't know how we can do this, if we need to go on record saying this or not, but I would like for the town to support a, that crossing, um, to be able to cross into the other neighborhood, to be able, I, I care a lot about pedestrian and bicycle connections. It'd be great if there was a full connection from O'Mill Stream all the way down to that crossing, if we can somehow make that work so that those folks in that neighborhood can also have that connection to the news river. So anything we can do to support that crossing on Covered Bridge Road would be great. I, I don't know if we need to say that officially or how we handle that. I know, I know it has to go through N C D O T. I know how N C D O T works. So I've done a lot of N C D O T work, so, um, but I, I would like, I think it would be stronger if there was some sort of statement from the town saying that we'd like to have that crossing.
So Chair Moore, if I may, so the applicant and town council will ultimately agree on the conditions, but if there are any conditions that the planning board would like to put forward for consideration, they may do so. So for example, Board Member Srasowski, if your condition, if you wanted to provide that as a recommendation for town council to, um, consider, and then staff can work with the applicants. Other notes I have are regarding the clearcutting of the property and also the 200-foot buffer. Now, whether or not the applicant's able to, um, adjust their, their, their application or their master plan to meet or provide any conditions, it all remains to be, um, heard. But if the, if the board decides to proffer some extra conditions or modification of existing conditions, that can be, I would consider that as be part of your motion as well for consideration.
One question, um, I guess regarding, uh, will, do we need to apply a specific condition or can we just have a condition that there is further conversation? I don't know if there's a cutoff for when those signatures should be, uh, received. Was it prior to this meeting or is it prior to a, a future? Sure.
Uh, yes, it was March 11th, Monday, March 11th.
And I, I don't, I don't expect that, um, there is still an opportunity to receive all 100 signatures or all 100% of the signatures?
Um, no, no, sir, because we, you know, it would, it would require a rework of the master plan.
Of the master plan? That would, um, need to be done before this body again and then for town council?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'm struggling with that. I, I would really like to have something, uh, to, to help the neighbors with the transition. I think either along the, the edge of the parcel, um, along their, their, uh, their drive, um, from their neighborhood into this development, if there's a, a row of trees or a buffer that can be provided along Brookhill Drive, um, I, I don't know if I'm prepared to have a specific footage requirement for the buffer, um, but I, I do think it needs to be something considered by town council. I, I think it's important, um, that these, these neighbors feel heard, at least to the degree of, I understand 30 feet is significant and I believe that to be the case, but if there's more that can be done to, to make folks feel better about this heading into the council meeting.
And I will add one thing too, as far as construction, uh, traffic, that was expressed to us as well. And so that is one of the reasons that the condition, it, we put into, or added to our condition that, um, the full widening of Brookhill Drive would be done and in place by us, um, prior to the 50th C O of the neighborhood out of 750, so that, um, it would be a safer drive and there will be no, um, as Brandy mentioned, no driveways along from our neighborhood along Brookhill Drive, you know, for the individual homes. And so most of the construction traffic should be internal.
Okay, we're backed. We have the consistency statements. So I entertain a motion to recommend or not recommend to town council. Okay, Board Member Gleason?
Uh, this goes back to the developer. I think I heard you mention that you guys aren't in design stages quite yet. Do you think that you could tell me, maybe this goes to the engineering company, where, like how you've developed the plans that you've done so far? And just like, full disclosure, I have the experience that you do. I'm a civil engineer by trade. I work for V H B. Site Ops is an incredibly helpful tool. You can develop an entire site in one hour. Seen it done, done it personally. So what is, what is the standards that you guys have been using to develop the, the acres?
Yeah, so I'm also a civil engineer and that's my background. But, um, so yeah, you know, we do, obviously, when we do the master plan, we take into consideration the natural features of the property. However, we have not developed, I mean, we have not designed the water and sewer lines. We have not, the roads have not been designed yet or graded for. Each individual lot has not been graded for. So there's a lot of detail that we're not at yet, frankly, because it takes a lot of time and money and we don't want to invest that if we, we don't have the zoning. So, um, and we have not, we do not typically use site ops because it does not take into account in most cases, environmental features, which this has a lot, this site has a lot on it, and it'll just braid right through those.
Okay, um, I appreciate you kind of addressing that because I guess more the nature of my actual question was going to be more, it doesn't seem like if we were to either approve or deny this, that the process to re-present to us isn't going to be based on design, really. It's more the political side, the legal side, that's the issue, if I'm understanding everything correctly, or maybe permitting.
Could you say that again? I don't know, I don't know if I heard you correctly.
So kind of the general nature would be, if we were to deny this for whatever conditional reasons, and you guys would have to re-present to us in a couple of months, the drawback, it seems, would be more so either more comments from the neighborhood addressing those concerns, addressing either political or environmental concerns. It wouldn't necessarily be the actual design of the property, if I'm correct.
I still don't know if I understand the question. So are you, so you're saying that your, your concern is, I, I don't...
I'm saying from, from your point of view, what would be the holdup at readdressing this and fixing other concerns that it seems like everyone kind of has?
Um, so from what I understood, hearing, um, is that the only thing that would satisfy is a 200-foot buffer along, uh, so... Uh, so, um, we have had, we've been having those discussions since last November. We, we, um, we, hours and hours of attorney's time, we have paid for to try to help with that. We have donated 53 and a half hours of notary time from our office to help with that. We have, um, spent months and, you know, I could give you that, the specific numbers for texts, emails. But I mean, there's been significant, um, coordination, uh, at this point since. I think the notices went out in October, so. We do have contractual obligations to the seller that we have to also, we're trying to balance.
Turn it back over to the board for their consideration. For a recommendation to town council. You have the consistency statement before you for recommendation for approval or denial. Uh, entertain a motion.
Chair, I'll move. Move to approval, um, of option two, as, as stated, inconsistent with the future land use map. Make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning requests while the request is inconsistent with the future land use map and adopted 2045 comprehensive growth plan in that. The property is classified as low-density residential and medium-density residential in the future land use map. Goal LU1 seeks to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Strategy LU 1.1.2 looks to support residential development at varying densities based on the future land use map, associated character, area descriptions, and other relevant plans. Goal LU3 encourages a range of housing types and lot sizes that will meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes, and ages. Goal LU4 provides safe, sound, and well-maintained housing in neighborhoods. The future land use map will be updated to be consistent with the rezoning requests and appropriate corresponding land use category per North Carolina General Statutes 160D-605A. The action is reasonable and in the public interest that the comprehensive growth plan encourages residential uses in this area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
With a motion, uh, approval by Board Member Saraski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Listcom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. How many?
Two noes.
Three.
Three noes. Chair, Chair Moore, may I, may I do a roll call for clarification on that answer?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. So this is in favor of the motion. This would be Chair Moore.
No.
Um, Vice Chair Dupree.
Yes.
Board Member Applewhite?
Yes.
Board Member Saraski?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yeah.
Board Member Lipscomb? Board Member Lee? Board Member Gleason?
No.
And Board Member Bland?
None.
The motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 5B. Are we, are we, are we, uh?
He's here, man.
Oh, he is here?
In one of the left hands, right?
Yeah. No, he's.
Okay.
Good evening. We're moving to 5B?
Oh, we do have our consultant on there, so, uh, Dan Lambert will be able to present remotely. He's joining us from Charlotte. He's our chosen, he's our consultant and working on the downtown master plan.
Already.
There he is, Mr. Dan Lambert. Um, so a quick.
The next item on the agenda is 5B Downtown Master Plan Presentation. Presenter Dan Lambert, McAdams Consulting.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the board. We have before you Mr. Dan Lambert with McAdams Consulting Group outside of Charlotte. They've been working with the town for the last over a year and a half. Um, staff has been working with them. We have Lydia Davis and Patrick Pierce and Steven Mott and myself. We've been working with Mr. Lambert to get before you all a master plan that we're working on. Um, Mr. Lambert presented at the Downtown Development Advisory Board and at their February meeting, he went before our town council at the work session to give them a presentation on some of the items that are being discussed. And this is an opportunity for, for him to present to you where we're at right now with the downtown master plan. Uh, our plan is to take your feedback and input to help, uh, Mr. Lambert go back to the, to the board there and to continue working on the plan. And we'll bring this, this draft before you, uh, come in May is our anticipated date for your recommendation. All right, Dan, I think you're all good to go there.
Excellent. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Uh, let me share my screen for a presentation. My name is Dan Lambert. I'm the Director of Landscape Architecture with McAdams out of our Charlotte office. Uh, I have a 24-year, uh, career in urban design and urban planning. Uh, so this is the world I play in and, uh, take you through a little bit of the history of the project. I know you've had a long night already, so I'll, I'll pick up the pace through certain portions. So I'm not keeping you here up to the wee hours. Um, so let me share this and y'all let me know. Can you see that presentation?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, um, rather than risk going into a full mode and screwing up our, our technology, I'm going to do it from the screen, so, um, I'm going to talk briefly about our process. Um, we began this process, uh, uh, as Conrad mentioned, a year and a half ago, uh, through a data gathering, uh, exercise, which included, uh, looking at data that y'all provided and then moving into a public and stakeholder engagement. Um, several of you are familiar to me and we've, we've spoken with you directly during this process and seen you along the way. Uh, after gathering all of that information, uh, after several public, uh, engagement sessions, um, we put together an analysis of those findings to kind of better understand what all of that data was telling us and what the folks, uh, would like to see with downtown Clayton. Um, we took a look at opportunity sites, so places that are possibly, uh, ripe for redevelopment or at least possibility within the timeframe of our master plan, which is essentially 10 to 15 years, but occasionally we look at things that are a little bit farther into the future so y'all can start planning ahead for those, those larger items. Uh, and then from that, we've moved into a draft document. So the, the stuff you see in green there is kind of where we are right now. Uh, but we have started into action items and implementation strategies for some of the items that we know are going to be, uh, direct components of the master plan. Yeah, and then a final document will come there, much like what Conrad had mentioned. So we did a community survey, uh, an online survey that was posted for a little over a month and, and spectacular, um, input. We had over a thousand, uh, folks jump in and give their, uh, their comments. And which of these places do you consider to be part of downtown Clayton? Uh, Town Hall Clayton Center, Horn Square, Deep River Brewing, uh, Vincent's Post Office, so on and so forth. You'll see, um, a lot of, of the input of what they consider to be important in downtown. Uh, how often do you visit downtown? Several times a week or more, or once a week at least. Uh, was 62% of the respondents, uh, with others being there a little less frequently. Uh, the primary reasons for visiting, dining out, entertainment, festivals and events, and shopping. So definitely those three stood out. So definitely, you know, it's very much a, a, uh, commercial downtown core. Are there other destinations that they'd like to see in downtown? Food hall came out on top, outdoor amphitheater to kind of enhance the festivals and functions y'all already have. Uh, Children's Museum, there was a lot of talk throughout the process of folks wanting more to do for families. Uh, a commuter rail stop, uh, made the list. I know y'all had probably heard bits and pieces about that over the last few years. Uh, and New Modern Library kind of rounded out those that, that came in with about a third of participants. Uh, this word cloud kind of gives emphasis to the things, uh, that were stated as to what is your favorite thing about downtown? Uh, the one that came in, uh, the biggest and brightest small-town charm, which kind of, uh, is directly in keeping with a lot of what you just heard in your, uh, prior, uh, item on the, uh, agenda. Uh, but restaurants and bars, shops and businesses came in second and third. Uh, festivals and events and ability to walk around and Farmer's Market kind of came in following that. Your least favorite thing about downtown? Difficulty parking, which is, this is interesting. You'll see, um, possibly that, that is more of a perception than a reality. Uh, this is not uncommon during a downtown master plan process, especially one with, with a little more, uh, linear stretched-out development along, uh, uh, Main Street like you have. Um, and not enough retail and restaurants, too much traffic, uh, nothing to do. So given what I just told you, uh, was that largest response, if you ask again, how easy or difficult is it for you to park downtown? Uh, 10% said very easy, 47% said easy, so that's 57%, so over half of folks actually think it's easy. Uh, so it might show as the largest in one, but then when it comes down to it, you know, you're still, the majority of folks say that it's easy. But you do have 36% in difficult, 7% very difficult. So there is some perception that, uh, some folks are having difficulty parking downtown.
Dan, can I ask a question for you real quick?
Yes, sir.
Uh, was that, um, was the survey conducted before, after the parking, uh, parking spot additions that, uh, the town worked with community members to get, um, like near the Cardinal in those areas?
This was, uh, November, December of 2002, I believe, that this was posted.
Dan, uh, town staff is saying it was done before, so I appreciate it.
Yes, okay. Uh, what would make you want to visit downtown more often? More restaurant options, more shops and businesses, more entertainment? Again, some of the same things we were hearing earlier. Uh, what is your overall perception of downtown? The, the vast majority, uh, think it's either great or okay. Now, okay means that you're not far from great. If a few more things were added in those prior lists, I think a lot of folks would come in with the, the, it's great category here. Very few people find it boring, unsafe, or unattractive. What is your experience as a pedestrian in downtown? Uh, more than half said they enjoy walking in downtown, but 37% said they're cautious when crossing intersections. So really pedestrian and vehicular interactions are a concern for folks, uh, something that we look into. Uh, there's, obviously one of the parking solutions has been, uh, along First Street adjacent to the rail corridor. And so, uh, one of the things that we asked about, uh, that we've kind of been in discussions with North Carolina Railroad on is what do you think about paving sections of First Street and adding parking along the rail corridor, uh, behind those Main Street businesses? And almost everybody said that's a good idea. Uh, would you support the creation of a social, a social district in downtown Clayton? Vast majority said yes for this as well, four out of five. As far as preferences for Main Street, you'll see the things that kind of, um, under the strongly like category are the widening of sidewalks, uh, improved street and sidewalk lighting, enhanced pedestrian crosswalks. Um, so, um, a lot of, of positive response to those things that improve the pedestrian environment. Uh, but there's also, you know, if you start to pair that with the light category, uh, the ones that pair up the most are actually like underground utility lines, um, and the lighting, uh, and safety concerns. As far as preferences for what the public spaces should, should be or contain, um, a farmer's market building was high on the list, uh, trees and enhanced landscaping as well. And really, if you look at these numbers, everything's got a pretty good response. So small vendor spaces, uh, informal gathering places, uh, stage for live entertainment. There's really a lot of, you know, desire for all of these things. So the downtown study area boundary that we looked at is, uh, fairly extensive. Um, and I'll show you in comparison to the prior plan, which was a 2008 originated, uh, master plan. So we're, we're already, uh, 16 years beyond. Um, we're looking at this area, which includes some, some brand new developments we'll talk about here in a second. Um, this was the prior downtown study area, this rendered portion in the center. Uh, so if you look at the, the variation in area that we're considering, um, it's significant. Now, as far as that prior downtown master plan, it had a lot of proposed buildings, proposed, proposed mixed use, adaptive reuse, um, and then, you know, took a, took a look at what you could do for some infill and parking solutions. It had quite, quite a few good ideas and, and made for a pretty decent level of fabric, but you're also, uh, looking at something that was created in 2008, which happens to be the year where everything took a turn. So, uh, between there and now, of those items that were, those 29, uh, new items shown on that plan, only one, uh, was done in the fashion in which it was shown there and one was kind of redeveloped, um, the compared food site, uh, in a different fashion than what was shown. So two out of 29, uh, made the development cut in that 16-year period. But there have been a lot of recent projects on the perimeter. So what you're seeing here are projects that are either under construction or recently constructed, um, have received approval, uh, from y'all and from council, um, recently or, or on the books, um, or looking at current, uh, rezoning or permit approvals. So if we look at the downtown core, the current UDO core, uh, runs from, from Robertson, uh, all the way out to this end of the Main Street as it starts to curve and turn. Um, and it contains, you know, the vast majority of current, uh, commercial sites, but there is some trickle, uh, over here and, and a couple of sites farther down and actually your new commercial all the way over here. So one of the things we'd like to, uh, look at consideration for and have discussed with staff is the expansion of that downtown core area to include everything that heads all the way out west there. So you're, you're really kind of end-to-end, uh, expanding the possibilities of what can happen along the Main Street corridor and Second Street corridor and Front Street and First for that matter, um, along that stretch. Uh, from there, we went to look at some opportunity sites within that. Uh, we started from the downtown core. We looked at sites that have ease of redevelopment. So ones that, uh, that the town, or the, the town already owns are, are one of the things that, that might be a prime idea. Uh, there's a couple of you who own some of these properties and who we've spoken to directly about the potential for them as well. And so, uh, in the cases where some of that made sense, we looked at, at options for those as well. Uh, we also kind of ran a, a calculation to find those properties where the value of the land is greater than the value of the existing use. Um, and we had discussions with owners and tenants. Um, we, we talked with the public on what they would like to see in terms of, uh, you know, you saw within the survey, what more bars and restaurants, more shops, uh, more parking opportunities. So all of those things are reflected, uh, in how we looked at opportunity sites. Um, and then prior plan concurrence, we looked at, at what the prior downtown master plan, what the current comprehensive plan, uh, um, existing future land use, uh, what, what all of those things are recommending, uh, for these properties in their vicinity. Uh, and then spoke with town staff and got some council direction, uh, as was just mentioned, uh, here over the course of the last couple of months. Now, uh, when I spoke, uh, at the council workshop a couple of weeks ago, uh, we went from this into looking at some individual plans for those opportunity sites. And what we found in that exercise is that, um, that's a lot of little information that really doesn't give the bigger picture perspective that we need, uh, to go through this downtown plan exercise. Um, uh, kind of start big and refine from there. And so I'd like to take it in a slightly different direction with y'all today and get your perspective on the two themes that kind of came out of that discussion. And so, um, gotta give a disclaimer first, concepts that you're going to see are ideas only. Nothing that we're doing here has been set in stone and, um, you know, no, no properties are, uh, uh, at risk of instant redevelopment or anything from what you'll see tonight. So, uh, gotta make that disclaimer so nobody gets frightened when we start to get to individual sites. But before we do, um, I'd like to look at these two concepts. Now, there is, based upon, uh, a market study that was done as a part of this exercise, a large number of folks come to Clayton. A certain percentage of, percentage of those, uh, whether it be their living arrangements or where they work and what businesses they bring to the mix, um, will be absorbed within this downtown core. And so there's two ways to look at what that might look like in the future. It started to come, you know, kind of, uh, to the, to the surface in our last couple of discussions. And the first of those is a medium-density concept that looks at there being medium-density mixed use along the majority of that downtown core. So this blue line you see here is that extended downtown core that I just mentioned earlier. And so along the Main Street corridor, uh, and for the block on either side, uh, looking at that. And so, along the main street corridor and for the block on either side, looking at that, that's a possibility of medium density mixed use core. So adding residential at a higher degree than is there currently, but doing it in a mixed use sense, keeping the building heights at two to four stories so that you're really not changing a lot in terms of the character of what you're seeing there. It still keeps that kind of small town feel, you're really not creating anything new and imposing, although four stories doesn't happen very often in downtown Clayton today. But with the, the rates that that market study indicate of what's coming, it's something that is not out of the realm of possibility. So something to consider. So if we were to do that and spread that density through most of this at a medium density level, we would need a support area to also look at the potential to absorb some of that as well, in particular, the residential aspect. So you see this light yellow and some of these, it includes some of these new projects because I figured that those really kind of speak to that residential density as well. They're, they're the ones that are currently absorbing. So year one, people are buying those properties. So looking at all of these areas in yellow as the potential to add density, whether that be as more townhomes or small multifamily projects, but really keeping it on a smaller scale, in keeping with that same concept as the downtown core being a medium density. So the types of development that would be, here's the two to three story mixed use to kind of get an idea of character that wouldn't be out of, out of line with the architectural elements that you currently have and that, that character that defines Clayton as Clayton, that makes you special. There is a way to keep that development in keeping with your current character, not lose what makes this the place that people want to be. The residential to go along with that, I mentioned townhomes, kind of doing it in more of a historic, you know, row home, townhome character, gives you the opportunity to get a little bit of that density in that support area. So having this as a possibility for redevelopment within that extended area would be an option within that first medium density theme. Now, the other thing that came up as a possibility is rather than have that large yellow area that you saw where all that density spreads out, protecting that smaller single family character on the perimeter and really densifying the core to absorb that, you know, the folks that are coming, is a different way to look at this. So a high density core concept, where that mixed use core is really only a few blocks. Right here, we're looking like from Lombard to Robertson. But instead of it being two to four story, you look at three to six story buildings. You look at the possibility of structured parking in the future or parking underneath some of these taller buildings and surface parking as well. But then allowing that medium density character that we just talked about into the, the support area, but even with the possibility of there being some three story apartments, something like that. So really kind of keeping it to Main Street and portions of Second Street and then maintaining the character outside of that as best you can, for as long as you can. So, you know, again, this is looking at a ten to fifteen year timeframe. Things like structured parking might start to speak more to a twenty to twenty five year timeframe, but it really depends on where anybody wants to go with the density. So those are the two overarching themes. Here's some, what some of those redevelopment types might look like. Here's five and six story. Character starts to get a little more urban at this height, but as far as materials go and, you know, architectural articulation, kind of the styles, there is a possibility to keep this where it doesn't really feel out of place, it's just scaled differently. And if you're looking at it over a few blocks as the potential redevelopment footprint, you know, it really kind of gives you that core, that heart, that this stuff can happen, again, kind of preserving character as it goes outward. And then the residential that I mentioned, these are two and three story residential, kind of more of that urban character, but still at the same time, looking at materials and scale that fits the character of downtown Clayton. Some of the things that would happen in, within that fabric as well are, you know, we talked about farmer's market, people like to see. So an open air pavilion concept is one of the things we looked at. Top right, that's an interactive kids museum. And then the two bottom images are civic buildings. So there's definitely a need for, for growth on the side of Town Hall. Y'all are kind of busting at the seams as it is already. So one of the things for consideration is where that development might happen in the future as well. And then some of the other things that were mentioned, food halls and amphitheater or stage areas, these are kind of the, the character that would help that come to Clayton and still feel like it belongs in Clayton. So the opportunity sites that we have for you in here today are in four specific areas. And I'm gonna delve too far into this because, again, it was a lot of information, but I do want to show you kind of the character of what we're looking at. And I want to talk about some specific infrastructure investments that aren't developed, like redevelopment or private site development or even public-private partnerships.
Excuse me, Dan, we have a question from one of the board members.
Sure.
Thanks, thanks for giving this presentation. I actually have more of a comment than a question. Well, it's kind of a question. Have you considered including the municipal park in the downtown core that you've extended? The reason I ask that is in typical downtown areas, what people really like to do and they don't, this normally will not come out in the survey because they don't recognize it till it's there. It's one of those things that it's not, people don't use it till it's built. But connecting parks, having the parks as kind of your, your bookends to the connections. I mean, we, we have an opportunity here with the municipal park, Town Square and Horn Square, to make that the core, to make that the pedestrian core, to connect all of those. It's something that other downtown streetscape downtowns have been trying to do, connecting parks to parks, because that's really what people like. And those are also places where people can park. So it kind of kills two birds with one stone. And so, I was just wondering if you were gonna include the municipal, if it was me, if I was developing this plan, I would include the municipal park in the downtown core.
Yes, we, we can definitely look at changing the line to include it because what you'll see is exactly the types of things you were just talking about and is right, what I was about to, to refer to, is that we do have within those plans on the opportunity sites, kind of the periphery stuff that connects it all together. We have greenway and sidewalk connections, we have additional parking along the rail corridor, things like that. So you will see elements of that in the presentation tonight. But as far as changing that, the yellow line you're seeing on screen right now, we could definitely do that to include municipal park. There's no reason that that's not a possibility. All right, so here's some of the tips for consideration that we mentioned to council in their workshop that we'd like for y'all to be thinking about as well, between now and when we get a final draft presented, that we want your input on. Expansion of the downtown core to the west, comfort with those proposed development levels, what, what feels okay. Are you completely averse to like the six story buildings altogether? Or are you more, you have more trepidation about the extending the possibility of more density of residential through that larger area? It's kind of an either or situation. The expansion of public and shared use parking, which you'll see some of that here in these, these opportunity sites. The possible closing of rail crossings, one of the things that is going to allow us to do some things along the rail corridor is to give something back to the rail corridor. North Carolina Railroad wants there to be fewer crossings. It's really not as big of an ask as it might seem because there are a couple that are in close proximity to each other and some that make more sense than others to remain open. It also will help in terms of just pedestrian safety overall if we have some very well-defined, well-done pedestrian crossings, excuse me, fewer intervals. The transfer of parking from Main to lots and structures, and we'll talk about that here in a bit, through the sites. And then the use of public land and redevelopment, as I mentioned, one of the quickest ways to, to start injecting this is to utilize land you already own. So we'll talk about that briefly as well. And then the establishment of tax districts, incremental funding districts. So, sorry, I'm kind of out of order here. So the opportunity sites that we were talking about, the ones that you'll see are the three hundred block West Main, Town Square site, Horn Square block, running from church to Lombard, and then the five hundred block of East Main, which we've had some developer provided plans for that as well. So let me, real quick. One of the things that we look at through this process is no redevelopment, but at the same time, starting to look at the infrastructure that surrounds it. So you'll see things like improvements on mainstream, on Main Street in the streetscape. And here, the First Street one way with angled parking, that's the preference of the railroad, and that gives us the best opportunity for the most improved parking within that corridor because it's a little bit narrower than if we were to try to do ninety degree parking. It's also safer because you don't have cars backing out across both, both lanes of traffic. There, we're proposing a rail corridor fence. This is both for preventing pedestrians from crossing at random intervals and to help protect the cars that are here from maintenance on the rail corridor. It's one of the biggest concerns of the rail corridor. And you'll see this proposed Greenway Trail connection on the Front Street side. We've got different alternatives that look at that in different places, but you also see sidewalk connections all the way along that First Street corridor. So we, we're looking at ways to get people across these long blocks safely without having to cross traffic very often. So for this particular block, we looked at kind of a modular, what could happen in each of the different portions of it, there's kind of three portions to this block. We looked at the possibility for reuse of character items like laundromat with residential behind it. We looked at the possibility of new construction with a mixed use two story that has retail, restaurant, and office with significant surface parking. You heard me mention all of this parking on the rail corridor, but one of the things about parking within that rail right away is that at any given time in the future, the rail could decide that goes away because it's their length. So if they decide they want to put two or three more rails on there, then their parking is gone. So we cannot depend on that for the long term. It's a good temporary solution, but as you start to look at redevelopment opportunities, you are going to have to require that these redevelopments include some parking that could be utilized as shared use parking in the future. As you move to the middle of that block, this is where the batting cages are. There's a, a large existing building that could serve very well as redevelopment opportunity, but then looking at a new building on the other portion that's mixed use retail below and residential above, again, with parking behind. This helps kind of keep that, that character that you get in a small town Main Street of having the buildings fronting the street and the parking not be the front door. Or the potential of there being new buildings, and these are kind of in keeping with the one you saw here, where you really front the street with those, you kind of create some, some neat outdoor spaces that could be outdoor dining or shopping opportunities, and then the parking behind, making sure it's got good connection that could actually be accessed even if this were to go away. And then again, looking at the adjacent property that's got some redevelopment opportunity there and maybe the incorporation of a food hall, using the depot's coffee shop, like there, there are some, some opportunities in here, little pocket parks for people to, to sit down and enjoy whatever they find, whether it be food or, or their new goodies from shopping. And then the possibility of looking at residential alternative. So if you start to pair those together, you start to get things that, that look like a higher level of, of development. And here, you've got kind of something that speaks to that medium density that we talked about earlier, where these are two story buildings and primarily commercial use with a little bit of residential. Or in the reuse consideration here, you get a little bit more residential and then the mixed use kind of stays to the, to the commercial centers that are already existing. So if we go on to the Horn Square block, similar thing, you look at the diagonal parking the one way, which would essentially end at Lombard, come back to that intersection. But you'll see some other things here. And this is, this is not recommended, but this is currently how some of this portion of Front Street gets used. When it comes to festivals and large events, people are parking in that space between. So, you know, I would not recommend this per se, but we would look at the possibility of overflow parking still happening on that side if necessary. Again, the rail corridor fencing, and in this case, looking at a great separated crossing, so essentially a tunnel where this starts to get tall again, so that you can actually get pedestrians back and forth from the, the northern neighborhoods to the core of downtown without having to cross the rail at all. And again, making that, that trail connection. And that trail connection would run all the way along Front Street to where it becomes stallings and would actually give an opportunity to connect to municipal park. So exactly what was mentioned earlier. There is a commuter rail platform canopy. So there's the potential for that to exist right here at that Horn Square site. Looking at this in a modular fashion like the other, you could do mixed use on the corner, you could do a couple of mixed use buildings, one pushed back towards the rail corridor, one kind of fill in the gap in that gap tooth smile you got there on the, on Main Street. You got buildings in most places, but you got a hole here, you could fill that up and then put a large surface parking lot behind. So this really gives you opportunity to start to guarantee the existence of that parking just in case that ever goes away. Again, here's one that, these are four story, but this is where we could start really talking about the density going to a five or six story. If you looked at apartments that kind of front First Street rather than Main Street, so they happen on that second, that second row essentially, with some parking underneath. And then what happens with Horn Square? It could become partially mixed use, but still have the civic park, the plaza function where you take the parking out of the center of it and get a more consolidated space for public function. Or you could really put that permanent farmer's market canopy there and do markets and festivals there as well with a little bit of shelter from the storm and look at the possibility of either mixed use or even blending in the civic use, since this kind of already has a civic function and is a, is a publicly owned property. Parking alternatives. So what does it look like if you start to pair those things together? If you start looking at those elements that are second row and kind of creating this whole new row of buildings back there with mixed use and apartments with the plaza? Or if you look at kind of that more, this says high density, but you know, really, it kind of, this speaks more to high density, five or six story. But you could definitely kind of keep it a little bit smaller here with mixed use and with that civic use. Or you look at something really high density going in the future where you've got a parking deck that serves all of these, and these currently say four story, but again, could be five or six. If this all goes to the sixth story, then you really start to, to feel that density that we were talking about. I mean, in that case, this, rather than being two story of restaurant and office, it would probably become three or four story of retail with residential above. Town Square is one of the properties we looked at. You know, you see fewer of the additional improvements here, but you still see kind of the proximity to all that parking on First Street. A new civic building could happen here because it's diagonally directly across from where y'all are currently. It kind of creates a broader civic core and then still leaves space again for Town Square to still serve that public park and plaza function. There's possibility for that to happen across the street. There are a couple of single family residential properties there that have shown willingness to look at possibilities for redevelopment. Or here's the, the real fancy shoehorn version, which is, y'all have a brand new parking lot here, but that parking lot just happens to be large enough that in the future, it could actually house a four story civic building and a parking structure that would serve this and other civic uses. And these are the, the images that were shared from this owner, as far as what could happen on the five hundred block. Smaller scale, definitely I would keep these as a smaller scale at this end of development, but at the same time, it could, could be very similar to what you have at Good Western then, and kind of function as like the early gateway, the early indicator that you've changed character from the single family residential areas, and you're now in the heart of the downtown core. and you're now in the heart of the downtown core. So that is what I wanted to share with y'all tonight. That's a lot of information, but these are the things that I really want you to focus on along with those two overarching themes where there's kind of that medium density. We'll look at these real quick again, keep in your mind before we wrap up. Medium density where we really stretch out that mixed-use and keep it all two- to four-story. So keep it all lower level, but have it run the full length of Main Street with a larger area of potentially more dense residential support. Or that high-density concept of looking at, you know, all the way up to six stories over a few blocks and really having that high-density, you know, central core. And then bringing that additional residential density possibility into a tighter space, but allowing it to become a little bit taller. So those are the main concepts I want you all to kind of toss around because those are the things I think that we are really trying to determine which direction makes sense for this plan going into the future. And then these elements here. So this I can share with Conrad and he can send your way as well. So you have these for reference. But the rail closing, the closing of rail crossings is a big one. Which ones, you know, make the most sense? I'm pretty sure that two of the ones that are currently in existence, I think there's five functioning ones within the stretch that we're looking at. I think two of those five could go away. Some make more sense than others. The expansion of public and shared use parking. I think the very first action item would be to get an agreement in place with the railroad. You are able to secure the improvement of the parking along First Street for the short term, really knowing full well that that's your bridge to get to where you're going in the future with other parking elsewhere. And then the possibility of the use of public land and those redevelopment opportunities. You saw what we looked at there in terms of both Horn Square and Town Square. But there could be future partnerships with property owners, local developers. And then that expansion of the downtown core. Currently, the UDO, like I said, only has that eastern portion of Main Street within that downtown core designation. And our recommendation is definitely to extend it all the way to the west just to give you flexibility through the whole corridor. Because you don't know today which of those parcels along that stretch are going to be the ones to come to the forefront with a redevelopment opportunity first. And it would be a shame to miss a really great development that might spur some economic growth that just happens to be on the west half of that rather than the east. So I think character-wise in the long term, that whole corridor is going to be very much all a part of the same functional downtown core. So and then eventually, everybody, I don't know if this is going to be your exercise as much as council's, but everything's going to get paid for. So that last item, the incremental district that could fund all this is going to be definitely something that needs to be considered sooner rather than later. So do y'all have any questions for me? Or anything related to the process or those opportunity sites or any of the considerations that I've offered up that we are taking into account for this document update?
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Lambert? Mr. Searasky?
I have a few questions. One is just a comment. I'm okay with more signals in downtown because there is something now called leading pedestrian intervals that a lot of cities have where you actually let the pedestrians cross first before the signals turn green that I think we should consider in downtown. So if we're really, if we really are a pedestrian-friendly town, I think we should consider that as a measure now, actually, not even wait for this plan to happen. So I just want to throw that out there real quick. I like the idea of more density. I like the density. My one question I have though is where are the people that live in these mixed-use housing going to work? Because I don't also like, I don't like to see seas of parking either. So we have to figure out a way, and I don't know if this is really a question for you or for the town as a whole really, is how do we get business? How do we keep business in the town and don't have people leave the town for business as part of this? Because that's what's going to make a downtown even more vibrant is to keep people there during the day and not have them leave town. So how do we include business? As we talk about mixed-use, how do we make part of that mixed-use office or business or something like that that's going to keep people here? The other thing that we should be considering if we're looking at mixed-use is some of the residential to be affordable. Make sure we have some aspects of affordable housing in this. And then I'm glad you put a parking deck on there. I know parking decks are expensive, but I think we should have a plan for at what point do we consider a parking deck? Maybe it's not now, maybe it's not 15 years from now, but is there a timeframe that we should consider a parking deck? Because again, I like, I don't like seas of parking. It just, there's a lot of these, a lot of these concepts that just had seas of parking and that, I don't want to see seas of parking in downtown. And then last but not least, I would love to leave the town squares alone. I don't want to put buildings on the town squares. I think it's, one of the aspects of having a great downtown is having passive green spaces. And if you build on those town squares, you're losing the passive green spaces. And I think if you go to any large city or really any city for that matter, you know, on the weekends and even in the evenings, you see people using those passive spaces more than anything else. And having those passive green spaces that are connected by pedestrian activity would be, I would try to leave that alone. So having squares or leaving the squares alone or the park alone would be my vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gleason?
I kind of like to echo the, there's a lot of parking on the maps. I'm not a big fan of parking either. Downtown Clayton has such a great opportunity to become a very walkable centered area. So when I think about something for downtown Clayton, I picture more of like NC State University Hillsborough redevelopment that they did, but even limiting the parking there where Main Street especially becomes purely two-lane road with like a small divided median and wider sidewalks. That's kind of what my picture, but at least just for Main Street. I obviously understand that we have a lot of people moving here and we do need to accommodate for people in some form. And if public transportation around the city to downtown is not being considered, it maybe should be considered to allow for other options. And then my second sort of comment is we obviously have the brewery and a couple of bars kind of downtown. Has it been considered to maybe open up a certain, I guess, number of blocks similar to downtown Raleigh? That would be more of like an open drink area where people could maybe bar hot from one to one within a certain zone and be able to take liquor from, or you know, wine or anything from one spot to another. I don't know if that's like a city ordinance thing, but I know that that fits in with a number of crowds, at least that fit Clayton. So those are my two comments.
Yes, sir. That question within the survey that was about the social district, that's exactly what that is. It's establishing that area where people can open carry with the proper containers their beverages from one place to another.
What move that away?
As we consider higher density in downtown, I also think it's warranted. I guess after, you know, looking through this plan, is it feasible for some of these mixed-use residential developments up to five stories to be built in downtown? Do we have, I don't know if you're privy to some of the required infrastructure that would be needed or are there stormwater regulations or other things that are going to prohibit that from happening? I want to make sure if we, you know, a lofty plan is important, but there is some actionable way to get that done, especially if we're going to have this plan to consider some of those developments that may be coming forward in the next several years.
Two of the biggest, because I talk about this every week. We've got a lot of property on Main Street. And stormwater and the uncertainty with the railroad are the two things because you can't make decisions and then you don't know, you know, what, you know, you're stuck in a paralysis of analysis when it comes to the railroad. Because you take about, think about the area on First Street behind Fair Game. Is that road going to stay at its current elevation? Or is it going to be raised up? You know, there's a lot of questions there. And then how do you develop the property right next door to it if you don't know where that's going to be? You know, and those kind of conversations are huge. And then one thing that, the common plan of development and interpreting common plan of development and how it relates to redevelopment and stormwater, it's insane, you know? So if you put more than one tract together, if you happen to own more than one tract together and you're just looking at your 10th of an acre site and not your one acre site, but if you ever have any plan that's conceptualizing anything on your one acre site, then you've got to look at it as a one acre site. So stormwater is huge because it's super, super expensive. And then the town's got inadequate infrastructure in most places also. So that is huge. And if we don't address those concerns, none of this is going to ever happen, in my opinion. And that's speaking from somebody that wants to spend money in downtown and wants to do development and has the land to do the development. And the barriers are huge.
I can speak to that for just a couple of seconds. We actually have our civil engineers do kind of a preliminary analysis of existing utilities and infrastructure. And from that, they've got an idea of what current capacity might be. And so given that and knowing kind of the, making an assumption as far as the rate that people would be moving to downtown, we can set up a timeframe of triggers that would essentially require infrastructure investment. So at what point would you need for your infrastructure to expand to bring the capacity to allow the next, you know, however many people to come? So that is a portion of this study. It's not a regional stormwater study or anything like that that might take into account something like the additional rail, like adding that elevation of a couple of more rail lines that you were mentioning, Mr. Lipscomb. But so understanding that this is kind of more of a guide. But it does set the stage for implementation strategies for these elements into the future. So it's trying to get you all prepared for when you need to start the funding mechanisms to do those large projects. I kind of putting those on a timeframe and knowing full well that we can gauge what the possible final build-out capacity might be that you need. And so we can give you an idea of what those infrastructure projects might look like in estimates in today's dollars. There's no telling what they're going to be, you know, 10, 15 years from now. But we can definitely put you on a path for knowing when those should happen and essentially what scale they should be or what could be the full build-out of your downtown core with whichever theme we decide is the direction y'all would like to go.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My turn. I like the larger area to be developed more so than the condensed. Because, you know, right now they're developing stuff on 70 and if you go to the railroad tracks and you come back towards downtown, I think if you start out and then build in, it'll make it feel more like you're in downtown now. Like right now, it's the Main Street, that's what everybody calls downtown. But if you expand that, now you can bring the restaurants and things that people are wanting because, you know, being on here for two years and everybody keeps saying we're building a house at the house at the house. What do we have to do here in Clayton? You go to Garner, Raleigh, Smithfield. So we want to be able to bring people to downtown. I definitely like closing Main Street for that little dense part, right? Where the cars can't really get in there and kids could run around from shop to shop and people can walk without feeling like they're going to get ran over. So I mean, I think that's a great idea with the larger scale and, you know, really give the people what they want. Because right now, that's all that we're hearing. We can't, you know, if we say anything about mixed units, the first thing they say is why build more apartments? You know, we've got 1,000 houses coming. We know we need the people before we can get the businesses. But at the same time, businesses aren't going to come unless they got the people to come and spend the money. So I think the larger scale it is to move it out, it'll make people feel like that they can get to it. Because right now you've got one bar over by Bojangles, you've got to know the bar. You know, so like they said, put bars in one little area. People can go around and you don't have to worry about a car running over you because you're crossing the street from the brewery. So, but I love this plan. Closing the railways, I'll be here all my life, so I can imagine what that will look like. So, but I think that I would love to see that as well. And thank you for, this is a good presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate your input.
Any other questions? All right. All righty. Well, thank you, sir. We really appreciate it. There are no more questions from the board members.
Thank you. I appreciate the time and especially on a long night like this one. I thank you all for sticking with me. And I will make this available to y'all for your reference over the next few weeks. And I'm definitely, Conrad will share my contact information with y'all as well. So if you have specific input or anything you want to talk about, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Dan.
Before Chad come on, can we take a two-minute recess? And I know they've been going one by one, but does anyone need to go to the restroom?
Okay.
Yeah. James is waiting. We're back in session. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Moore and members of the planning board. This is the next item. This is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment 1-24. As you recall, the Town Council approved the Unified Development Ordinance back in November of 2023. That ordinance was effective come January 2024. As a commitment at the time throughout the, the whole adoption process, it was communicated to both the board and the council that there would be a series of text amendments forthcoming to just reflect some changes with implementation, some clarifications, some compliance with state statutes. And this is the very first time that you're being a part of this whole text amendment process. So the way this works is Chad meets with staff, we meet with clients, we meet with just our day-to-day administration of this code, the UDO, results in a lot of feedback. And we're constantly looking for ways to improve the UDO, make it more relevant, make it more clear. So the way it works, and Chad will articulate this a little bit better than I will, is we take, we have a long-running list of all these items, and we work through the UDO, and we run through it with staff internally, and we bring it before the board. And you are welcome to make suggestions, make comments. This is a living document. At the end of the day, we'll be asking, or I think in our presentation, we're asking for a formal, a formal recommendation that we will then take to Town Council. And upon their review and adoption, it will become the new updated Unified Development Ordinance. So without further ado, further ado, Mr. Chad Meadows. Well, Chad, with Code Right.
Thanks, Conrad. I'm back. How's everybody? How's the energy level? Thirty minutes? Ten minutes? Did you have somewhere in between the two? Did you have a beard when you got here? So, my pleasure to be back before you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is the, you know, kind of here we are at the start, the beginning, or yet another beginning of this process. And I'm going to talk you through the process that we follow to go through the, the UDO amendments, which is very methodical on purpose. This is the first of a series of these. Eventually, you'll get to the point, like most of my other clients, they sort of look down when they see me coming because they know they're going to be here until 10 o'clock at night. I'm teasing you. It gets faster, it gets easier as we go along. I understand that you guys have not gone through anything like this before, and you're sort of like, okay, how does this work? And where's, what's our role? And how do we best fit? And the answer to those questions is, we work through it together. You guys will have some new ideas and some different directions that will integrate in with what we're doing, and we'll wind up with a process that's a little bit different than what we've used in the past and works better for Clayton. So we're on board with that and we're willing participants. So with that, I'm going to jump in and let's get started. Okay. So as Conrad mentioned, this is our first round of amendments. I'm going to talk quickly about the amendment process itself. The objective, obviously, is to hear your questions, answer your questions, and hopefully get a recommendation from you. And, you know, as we go through this, I want you guys to know and be aware that we've got a package of 36 or so amendments in front of you tonight. You're perfectly free to pull some off or add some new ones or make some changes. So this is an open, free-form kind of a process. You'll get more comfortable with it as we go through it. We would anticipate bringing these to you every quarter. So you'll be seeing our shining faces about three, four times a year with these packages, these omnibus sets of amendments. What controls what we bring to you is what happens with Conrad and his folks in the trenches. Imagine a group of people who are poring over a document day after day after day. And that's what you've got. That's what's happening in planning. So they are becoming familiar with the document. They are finding all of the warts and seedy underbelly pieces, as well as the stuff that works well. So it's not just a tale of woe. There are a lot of good things, too. It's just that when I'm here before you, we're here to talk about levers that need to be moved, dials that need to be turned, tweaks that need to be made. Okay? So we'll talk about the, these changes, and I, I promise you, I'll move through them quickly, and, and next steps. Conrad mentioned it's a living document.
Does he have to present this to both Planning and Board of Adjustment or just?
No. Yeah. So for correction, this is a legislative item, so it'll be going for the Planning Board for recommendation and on the Town Council for, for adoption. So it's not a quasi-judicial item, so the Board of Adjustment will not be hearing this item.
Because, you know, when we were going through the process, most of the items in the UDO were applicable to the Board of Adjustment. That's, that's why I said this is kind of straight, yes.
So the general statutes sort of require the Planning Board to, to be involved with ordinance changes, which that's what this is. So your statutory responsibility is to review this material for consistency with long-range policy guidance. That's, that's what you're here for. And frankly, to, to share your wisdom and insight with us and help us, you know, come up with better, better code provisions. So a little bit of both. But, you know, good question. And while, you know, some of the things that the Planning Board did under the prior UDC are different now, doesn't mean that you're not involved. In fact, you're just involved in a different way. That's all. So I mentioned these quarterly updates. You know, amendments get bunched together into omnibus bills. The few, the first few rounds are going to have some comments that we didn't address through the adoption process. You may recall, those of you who were around, there were comments from economic development, there were comments from engineering, there were comments from outside parties that we attempted to address but still had a backlog of comments to address. We are working our way through that backlog. And you will see in the coming presentations that we make to you, us working through that backlog. Okay? At the same time, there will also be new amendments, amendments that your staff has found, things that they want to improve, things that they want to change. And Jones Street is also at play here. Okay? The, the General Assembly is continuing to make law. They will continue to do that, and we will continue to need to respond to what they're doing. So you'll always see us in front of you with some backlog comments, some changes to, from statutory law, stuff that staff has found, court precedent finds its way in here. There's, it's a, it's a grab bag of things that, that bring us to you with these amendments. Okay. The amendment process follows the same track. Every time there's an adoption, you guys had an adoption of an ordinance on the 20th of November, questions arise, whether those questions come from you, from staff, from applicants, whomever. That leads to discussion, which leads to a summary table of things we want to fix, which leads to more discussion, which leads to red line text. You should have received a copy of red line text in your packets. Once the red line text is prepared, we come, we talk to you, we get your blessing and your curses, both, and we revise. And then we go talk to, to council, and we get adoption. And that, round and round we go. And this process works. This isn't the first time we've done this. Conrad and I have been doing this for five years now. It's a process that we've worked out. It, it works pretty well. And I hope that you'll agree after we've had a chance to move through these. Now, I mentioned the summary table. This is our tracking mechanism. And what it allows us to do is understand who made what comment, when did they make it, why did they make it, and how are we handling it? How are we going to address it in the, in the new UDO text amendments? Your red line documents that you received from us had footnotes in there. Every change that was in that red line document had a footnote. That footnote speaks back to the table so that we always understand who made this comment, why did they make it, and how did we fix their, their issue? All right? So that's our internal tracking mechanism. And our pledge to you is that we'll continue to follow that process as we move through these subsequent amendments. Okay? This is an addition to your UDO. This is the UDO amendments table. It's on page three. It's also a tracking mechanism. It will allow anybody who picks up the UDO to know exactly which sections changed, under which ordinances, which were approved on which days. These red line files, like the one you're looking at now, are saved by staff. They are the ordinances that allow us to track the changes. I'll note for you that all of the page footers in the document have a date last updated. That ensures users know which version of the code they're working with. Is this the most recent version? One other thing that you have not seen yet, but that you will see when this first round of amendments is approved, is a series of editor's notes. The text will be supplemented with additional notes about this section changed as part of UDOTA 124 on 4/15/22. Go see, you know, ordinance UDOTA 124 for the change, for how the language was expressed before the change was made. Okay? So there's always a breadcrumb trail to find your way back to what the book said before. It's always a trail about when did we make the change and why. Okay? The red line pages themselves. Okay. Every amendment gets tracked. If there's a change that we're suggesting, it's provided in, in the, the track change sort of sequence or, or format. If you're not familiar, red text is new and underlined. Blue text is text that existed, but we're proposing to delete. It's stricken. And green text is actually text that's moved from one place to another, but hasn't been changed in any way. I mentioned the footnotes before. These are cross-references to that summary table. Remember the yellow table that who changed what, when, and why? Those footnotes speak directly back to the rows in the summary table so that you can always find your way back to who made, who suggested this change and why are they suggesting it? Okay? All right. Questions? That's pretty much it on the, on the amendment process itself. It's, it's what we'll follow every single time. And we, we try to keep it transparent, and we try to keep it very methodical and very clear. Okay? Our objectives tonight are to very quickly go over the, the package of amendments that, that make up this first omnibus amendment set. If you guys have comments, changes, additions, deletions, this would be the, a good time to share those with us. And as I mentioned before, our hope is to get a recommendation from you. And, and those recommendations can be made subsequent to, you know, us making additional revisions. That's not uncommon for a planning board to say, I like this, okay, but get rid of 23 and change 13 to say this, and we're good to go. And that's very typical. So don't feel discomfort if you're like, well, I think this is an okay set, but I really don't like that number 22. Take it out. That's typical and appropriate. And in those instances, we would pull that amendment, add it to the table, and cycle it back through discussion. What do we need to do to change this? Okay? So that's the, the system. Okay. Thirty-eight changes in this package. They're organized into seven groups. There's some administrative or non-substantive change. There's 10 of those. There's procedural changes. There's four of those. Some district changes, four of those. Uses, development standards, enforcement, definitions. We don't follow a sequential or chronological list of these changes. We're bouncing around by topic area. Okay? Which can be a little jarring, but it's, it's, it's the most efficient way to cover this material. Okay? So I'm going to, I'm going to attempt to go through this very, very quickly. If you have questions, stop me. Everybody should have had the red line. So you're, none of this should be a surprise, hopefully. Okay. Administrative non-substantive stuff. We updated your staff. Okay. We wanted to make sure that the, that no one from the TRC was excluded. There was some concern about that happening. So we've added a provision that says, in no instance shall the TRC chair exclude participation of a TRC member. We added conservation subdivisions to the subdivision summary table. We clarified that exempt subdivisions are identified in the statutes. We replaced the word side path with multi-use path. The original version of the code mentioned side path several times. You don't have side paths. You have multi-use paths. So we've made that change. We've removed the timing requirement from neighborhood meetings and permitted town staff to attend those meetings as long as the planning director is comfortable with that. Okay? You may recall in prior versions, we said, town staff can't go. Don't go. Well, we want to allow them to go as long as the planning director is comfortable with that. There's a circular reference in Section 351 about sort of referencing conditional zoning and density changes. And staff was like, this doesn't make any sense, and it's a circular reference. Get rid of it. And we have. And I am going to talk a little bit about some important things like some density clarification for the conditional zoning districts that we need to cover. Please, sir.
Yeah, I have a question about 244, the timing requirement for neighborhood meetings. Is it now common pretty much in every municipality that you're required to have a meeting before applications?
So, a lot of communities take advantage of these neighborhood meeting kinds of things. And that's what 244 is, is focused on. It's focused on these, these neighborhood meetings. Probably the biggest reason why these things are popular is we used to have this thing called a protest petition. That's gone now. And the, the General Assembly and local governments wanted to, wanted to be sure that citizens had an opportunity to participate in legislative decision-making and the, and the, and the more significant quasi-judicial proceedings. And so these neighborhood meetings have kind of become in vogue here in North Carolina. And, and to be honest, most local governments are using those kinds of tools.
So from, from my experience in Burlington, we didn't require them, but they were recommended often. My experience in Colorado Springs, Colorado, it was neither required but also highly suggested and recommended, really because in Colorado, you could get folks appealing a project if it was approved by staff. So we would often encourage folks to do neighborhood meetings. I think the spirit of here in Clayton is to hopefully inform an applicant before they undergo a formal submittal.
Okay.
Of the neighborhood.
Yeah. It was, it was the, I love neighborhood meetings, was the timing of it before the application. It used to be you only did them after you, you, you did the application. And now it seems like it's more commonplace to have it before you submit. That's a great reason.
Yes, that is intentional. The, it is intentional so that the, so that those battles get fought before they're here in front of you.
Yeah.
That's, you know, the, the reason that they're timed that way. Good question. Continuing on, we're going to clarify District Uh, continuing on, we're going to clarify district setbacks and how they're measured. That is from lot lines, not easements or required landscaping areas. Uh, how do we handle conflicts between setbacks and landscaping or easement requirements? These, again, aren't new substantive standards. They're clarifying the existing provisions. Um, open space set aside is not required for minor subdivisions. Why not? Because they don't have homeowners associations. They can't afford to maintain it. Um, there's also some kinds of residential development that are exempted from open space set aside, so we're trying to clear that up in, um, the table on page 554. Like open space, parkland's not required for, uh, minor subdivisions. Okay? So those are just some clarifications. We haven't made any rule changes here, um, just some clarifications to what we were saying. Um, that concludes the sub the sort of non-substantive administrative clerical things. Um, there's always going to be typos, okay? Missing periods or misspellings or missing the letter T. I mean, that just happens, and we're not going to call your attention to those. Um, if you find those, very much call our attention to them so we can fix them, but there's a handful of typos in this round of omnibus that I'm not even talking about because frankly, it's 9:30, and we don't need to talk about a missing period. Okay, let's talk about procedures. Two, three, eight, conventional rezonings. The town wants to limit the number of conventional rezonings that can take place over the course of a year, so they're going to establish a schedule. I don't know whether that's going to be two or three or four or whatever, but that schedule will be on file in the planning department. Okay? That's conventional rezoning, not conditional rezoning. Conditional does not have any schedule or limitations on filing. Okay? We removed trails from the fee and lieu procedure because trails are private, um, and they're not required, like greenways or sidewalks. So there's there's no reason to include them in fee and lieu because we don't require them in the first place. Fee and lieu is for stuff that we require. We clarified that town-initiated street naming renaming procedures don't require a petition. If I'm a private individual and I want to change the name of a street, I have to circulate a petition with the people who live on that street, and there has to be a a minimum, a majority of people in support of that petition. Not so for local governments. You guys can change street names whenever you want. Okay? Um, a minor change on temporary use permits for special events. Um, just clarifying that the, you know, the planning director coordinates with police chief and other members of staff if there are, uh, assembly kinds of issues. We revised the traffic assessment. Um, a traffic assessment is required. This is not a transportation impact analysis. That's something different. The traffic assessment is kind of your T I A light. Okay? It's not doesn't reach the level of a full-blown traffic impact analysis, but we're still concerned about what's proposed, so we'd like to see a reduced scope, more simplified transportation review, a traffic assessment. Um, and we changed that from show to to May, and that's at the engineer, uh, engineering director's discretion, which is very typical, uh, for these kinds of lesser, uh, transportation studies for as part of new development.
On that one, I I don't have a concern with what you said. I I just am trying to figure out why the traffic assessment's even there if you have the number four under applicability on B, that basically lets the engineering director do what they want to do. Do I even have this section? And maybe this this maybe this isn't the right time to ask ask that question. Maybe that's something we could take offline afterward.
I so there are some developments that require transportation impact analysis. When you cross those thresholds, you've got to do it. Then there's this sort of gray area where, you know, maybe I'm in a part of town where the engineer feels there's already transportation issues or concerns, or it's a particular kind of development that didn't trigger the T I A requirements, but yet the engineering director's not comfortable with it. We wanted to make sure that there was a procedure in place so that that person could comfortably ask for not a full-blown expensive $4,000 T I A, but something a little bit less that would help us kind of understand and reveal concerns.
I understand the reason for it. I'm a traffic engineer by trade, so I absolutely understand the reason for it, and thank you, but there's a number four in applicability under B and B. It already you already have that discretion, so why do we need this extra section? That that's all I'm asking about. So it has nothing to do with this change. It's maybe more of a holistic view of this section.
Comfort level.
Okay. That's maybe Conrad, maybe that's something we could take offline.
Yeah, we can. As discussion. I have that point noted. I see I see the code section you're referring to, and Chad and I can talk about it offline.
Yep. And by the way, thank you for the the footnotes in every page. Those were extremely helpful. So thank you for doing that. And by the way, I don't know if you remember this, but you and I worked on a U D O in Durham 21 years ago.
No kidding.
Very familiar with your work.
Ah, fantastic.
Just want to put that out there.
So, yes, uh, the riparian buffer provisions, this is a significant change. We incorporated in your in your adopted U D O a lot of detail about riparian buffers. Okay? Your engineering department was not happy about that, and and let me explain why. Um, the town does not enforce or administer riparian buffer regulations. The state does that. Um, it's the state's responsibility to review development for compliance. It's the state's responsibility to handle enforcement matters. It is not the town's responsibility, and your engineering director wanted that to be more clear. At the same time, your prior U D C with respect to riparian buffers had five words in it. Five words. Go see the N C A C, section 0212 dash seven stroke five sub C. That's it. That's all it said. We felt like that was insufficient and left laypeople kind of wondering about what is a riparian buffer and where is it and why do how do I find out more about this? So we've tried to balance, uh, your engineering director's, you know, laudable concerns about not having standards that he has to enforce when he's not permitted to, but at the same time not just throwing up our hands and saying, well, there's something called a riparian buffer. Go talk to that guy about it. Uh, so we're trying to split the difference, and so we've taken a middle road approach. We talk about what riparian buffers are. We talk about the zones. We talk about the fact that the state enforces it, and if you'd like to know more, here's some cross references for you to go check out. Some changes to districts. These are significant. We've had a love-hate with with housing options. Uh, it's been a very interesting road, uh, from from start to finish to now where we are, and we are continuing to evolve and understand our market and what's comfortable here in Clayton. As part of that, we are making adjustments to the R H D, the residential high-density district, and the R M D, the residential medium district. And what changes are we making? We are pulling out the ability to do duplexes and triplexes in the R H D district. If somebody wants to do those kinds of residential uses, there is still an avenue available for them. That would be the conditional rezoning process. Okay? So this shows the R H D district table with NAs listed for triplex, quadplex, and duplex in the R H D districts. Okay? Not saying no, what we're saying is you gotta you gotta do a conditional rezoning. All right? Same issue with R M D, except that we didn't allow triplexes and quadplexes there anyway. We did consider allowing duplexes. We've struck that. All right? Type three conditional rezonings. Those are the rezonings that permit applicants to request deviations from the standards. Somehow, some way, there was an element that had to be included in your regulation that didn't get included, and I don't know how it happened. The basic test of why you should consider a type three conditional rezoning is it's going to result in a higher quality of development than what would have resulted from a strict application of the standards. I'm going to give you relief. I'm going to give you a reduction in the standard. Well, you better give me better development. And the the code is supposed to say that. It's supposed to spell that out for the applicant. That language wasn't in there, but it is now. All right. This is important. Staff has had challenges with applicants bringing conditional rezoning applications that have densities that far exceed what would be permissible under a conventional rezoning district. Okay? For example, let's say somebody wanted to go in the R H D district, right, with a multifamily kind of a development. They could get 16 units an acre, 12 units an acre, whatever it is, under the conventional new R M F district. Or they could propose a conditional district. What kind of density could they have with this new conditional district? Well, it turns out the sky's the limit because we didn't cap it at all. And now your staff is seeing applications coming in with 30 units an acre, 40 units an acre, and there's a concern about having some more clarity about how much density you can have off the bat, what you have to do to get a density that's above and beyond what might otherwise be allowed. And so the reason that I'm telling you this long tale is we need to have a conversation with you, and we need to talk about what are the things that the U D O needs to include when I bring an application that's got 30 units an acre or 40 units an acre? That might be things like anything above the threshold has to be vertically integrated mixed use. Anything above the threshold has to be attainable, deed-restricted, uh, workforce housing. Anything above the threshold has to be, you know, whatever it needs to be, made out of gold. I mean, you know, that's a silly silly example, but this idea that if the from staff. So we have a two-pronged salute from staff. So we have a two-pronged solution. Prong one is the clarity you see on the screen. Okay? Where we're actually saying, here's your allowable density. It corresponds to the to this conventional zoning district. Can you get more? Yes, you can. Do the density incentives. Do the sustainable development incentives. Get the extra three or four units an acre that you're going to get. Okay? That's prong one. Prong two is talking with you guys in a work session about what are the things that we need to be integrating for folks who want to do more than 125% or 150% of that corresponding conventional density threshold. Okay? I'm sorry to be so planner nerdy with you at 9:30, but this is important stuff. Um, this is a major weakness in the U D O that we need to fix.
I I guess the general question would be, does the U D O need to have the those specifics? So I guess I'm I'm asking the question back to you. Do we want to provide those specifics within the the U D O for, um, developers or others to to reference, or would there be kind of an open-ended opportunity of, hey, here is the best we're going to throw the kitchen sink at this development in order to get, you know, whatever, you know, units per acre we will consider?
Great question. Should we should we stay silent on this, or should we provide some clarity?
That's the question.
Right, right. And the answer is, your staff wants some clarity.
They want clarity. Fair enough.
Yeah, if I may, um, so, um, when we're negotiating, when we're talking with the development community, it's it it helps them also understand what the thresholds are for, for example, if we were to have a percentage above the baseline density in the code proffered. I really like the idea of a menu of items that someone could kind of pick and choose from, um, to just to provide some of the the guidance for developer to pick and choose from, and they could always go above and beyond as well if they wanted to, but at least you're setting the baseline of what council might be expecting and the planning, what y'all might be expecting.
And Chad, there are existing examples of what that might constitute, but are we looking for a wider range to accommodate the ones that are really over the top of the existing density?
Yes, 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 there are examples. This is, I mean, this isn't out there on the bleeding edge, but this is this is kind of cutting-edge stuff. Um, I think it's consistent with what you guys are looking for here, um, and I'm I'm excited to think about ways that we can can do this, um, and and come forward with regulations that are going to be a little bit more effective than some of the ones that I've seen in other local governments. For example, there is a triangle community that incorporates something called compensating public benefits in their regulation, uh, but nobody ever took the time to compare the cost of those compensating public benefits to the density bonus you get. Net outcome, no compensating public benefits. It's too expensive. So we we have some work to do, but we need to kind of have a conversation with you guys about what from from a policy standpoint, what are we in a position to be comfortable with? And then where how do we build the mousetrap from there?
Yeah, I I think just as general, uh, uh, comment, I I suppose, I don't want us to to limit ourselves through the the U D O. I think if there's a a developer that can do something really interesting downtown, for example, really high density, but there's a huge benefit that can come along with that, I don't want us to limit them by providing too many examples.
Fair enough.
That's my that's my trepidation there, uh, but I'm I'm open. I think it's important for guidance for staff, and particularly as we see more interesting development likely in the districts we're talking about downtown.
Sure.
Right? But that's my my general comment, but I I think we can think creatively about it.
This is totally natural evolution. This is your staff applying the code and finding weaknesses where they're like, I need a tool, you know, help me. I can't I'm not I'm having a hard time, you know, doing my job well. We need to fix this. This is just exactly the kind of thing that this whole system was built for.
I have a quick question about the districts on here. With the with an updated downtown master plan, Conrad, have we thought about doing an overlay district around the downtown core? That's a transition area between the downtown core and outside the downtown areas?
Well, the in terms of an overlay district, what I think prior, when I came to the town, we had, there were some other zoning districts that that Chad had created, two or three zoning districts. So I think the intent was to allow those or to allow those areas to be rezoned. The way we're kind of would have to think about this would be if the downtown master plan is approved and there's a a future land use map component to it, what it does is it sets the stage for future rezonings to occur incrementally. Um, but it could also be an opportunity for the town to do a town-initiated rezoning. And so that would, of course, involve public hearings and engagement of citizen stakeholders, but we do have the the bones for that in the U D O. Um, so that can either take place in in an overlay, or it can take place, you know, differently, you know, rezoning each parcel.
Let's get the thing adopted. They told me it was going to be adopted before we finished. Um, and so we wrote those placeholder districts. There's a core, uh, you know, a transitional area and a periphery, and, you know, maybe those puzzle pieces fit when we get a plan, and maybe they don't, and we'll just have to kind of see what what shakes out. That's a good question. Okay. So we'll be talking about this conditional rezoning density stuff again. Okay? We've got a interim kind of band-aid to put on here, and we're going to need to talk about this some more. Okay? All right. Along the same lines, um, you know, this this provision shows that when when the code was drafted, we were using a particular district as our kind of guideline or guardrail for what are the dimensional standards that we would apply, and, you know, then we made some changes to allowable uses and that we couldn't use that guardrail anymore, so we had to. This is what you call a ripple effect from a decision. Um, there was a decision that we wanted to kind of back away from a wider range of residential use types, and so we had to we had to make some changes to the dimensional standards so that the process worked right. This is called a ripple, and there'll be a lot of them as we go forward in the coming months.
One clarification on the procedure for conventional rezoning. That's staff-driven. That doesn't, uh, for those, so they need to go to town council.
So for a conventional rezoning, that's going to be an applicant submitting, or it could be town as well. A town could submit a conventional rezoning request, but typically it'll be an applicant doing the request. It'll go to planning board because it's a legislative item, and then it will go to town council.
Okay.
The key difference is conventional zoning applications don't include conditions.
Right.
I can do whatever use I want, and we're not able, we're we're not allowed to talk about this use or that configuration or or this buffer. None of that's allowed, like like the case you had today where we're talking about all this stuff and buffers and things. Can't do that in in conventional zoning cases. Some changes to uses. I realize this is a hard table to see, but hopefully you can see on the screen. Um, there was a suggestion to pull mini-storage or self-storage, whatever term you want to use, out of the the light industrial district and allow it as a conditional. Uh, so kind of like what we've done for apartments and duplexes and triplexes, we're doing this same sort of thing for self-storage. Consternation about the transfer station. Transfer station is a place where, you know, municipal waste is is transferred from one collection vehicle to another. Um, and And we had suggested that those be allowed in a rural, sort of a rural component and a, and a heavy industrial component. Want to use the rezoning, the conditional rezoning process to handle those, which is fine. Earlier, we talked about the duplexes and triplexes and the changes we wanted to make to the two residential districts. That's reflected here in this table. We've added some clarification about heavy trucks and trailers. Oh my gosh. We'll, we'll deal with fences and chickens and heavy trucks and trailers just, just out into the future. We'll be continuing to deal with these things. And so we're tweaking and trying to add some clarity about what's allowed and what's not allowed and where you can keep your trucks and, and where you can keep your R Vs and those sorts of things. Okay? There'll be more of this. Okay. This is important. The General Assembly made some changes to water extension policy for all local governments in the state. And we are still exploring with your elected officials whether or not the standards as drafted comply with the law. Okay? So we are still sorting through that. In the meantime, the water and sewer extension provisions in the current U D O are unclear with respect to are individual site commercial developments required to extend water sewer, to, to, to pull water sewer to them based on a minimum distance? The answer is it was unclear. These standards make it clear you do have to do that. Is that lawful? We're still working on that. There's a lot of difference of opinion in the planning circles now about the ramifications of session law one, 202390, which is the bill that changes this, at least with respect to wastewater. Okay? Nobody wants to talk about that bill, right? Good. Because it's pretty boring. Street stubs. This is something we're going to be talking about again. Okay? Street stubs are very important for building a connected street network. You saw tonight how people feel about connected street networks. They're not fans. At the same time, suburban gridlock is what results when you don't have connected street networks. And if you think people hate connected streets, wait till they sit in suburban gridlock. Street stub's very important. At the same time, we don't want street stubs to nowhere. That's a, that's a failure of our system. It's wasted resource. So we're trying to do a better job calibrating about when street stubs are required and when they wouldn't be required. In the meantime, as we continue to talk about that issue, we needed some additional clarity about what happens when my next door neighbor who owns vacant land won't let me run the stub to the property line. There's all of this stuff that has to happen so that we can be sure that that street connection does get to the lot line when the time is right. That's what these provisions are for.
Can I make a suggestion or an addition or everyone? Because I've seen this a zillion times. Can, I don't know if we can include this or not, but it would be great to include a design that adequately shows how the street can be extended into the next property. Because I will tell you, that's one of the biggest issues is, is that you have a stub. No one has done a design and there are communities now that require designs 200, 300, 400 feet into the other property, just a design to show that it actually can be done. Because you have a lot of these times where you just have a stub and then the land falls off. And then what do you do? Right? And then there's plenty of those, we live in a very hilly part of the state.
Sure.
So if there's something we can add, some sort of design standard to this, I don't know if that's a U D O standard. I don't know if that's a, if that's more of a staff level standard, but something along those lines to ensure that what the stub can actually connect to something else instead of it just being a paper stub.
Let us give that some thought. We have intentionally not incorporated street standards in the U D O and rather just been deferential to the transportation plan. And for thoroughfare and collector's streets, that works really well. It doesn't work as well at the local street level. So let us chew on that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I've worked on so many projects where the town, like, I'm not going to name the town in the triangle, just like you said, town in a triangle, where I've had this issue on multiple projects where they expect the stub for that exact reason, but then you're stubbing to a property that either falls off or you just can't physically build the connection.
Right.
So.
Obviously, those instances would be instances where we would say, probably don't need to have a stub here because it's not practical to, to continue this street. Fair enough.
Yeah. And I'll add, if there's, if there's a, a example, a detail, feel free to send them my way, then we can look into follow-up on that too.
Um, along these lines, we want to clarify that, you know, street stubs around the perimeter of your development do get credited towards the connectivity index. Internal street stubs don't. Development entry points. Just some clarity around the rules. We had some, some numbers in our table that led to some confusion. We have fixed those. We've clarified some of the language so that we're consistent in our terminology. And I want to note for you guys that street stubs can be counted as development entry points. Okay? The idea is if you're doing a bigger development, we want more ways to get in. Why? For safety. Okay? For transportation management. Okay? Sometimes depending on where the development is, you can't put a street in because there's no street to go to. So what do you do? Well, you put in a street stub. We're going to allow street stubs in certain conditions to be credited as these development entry points, even though it's, it ain't a development entry point unless you're in a helicopter because there's no street there. Okay?
So I have a question about this, but I apologize. I feel like I'm asking all the questions. I'm sorry. I'm not a planner, but I love doing this stuff. So isn't there a state statute that, this is more restricted than the state statute, right? Because isn't there a state statute that says you don't, that you, you don't need to do the second, need to do the second point of access to 150 units?
There have been some changes to the statutes that, that change the numbers in terms of when an access way can be required. Like driving on the highway, sometimes the things that you do aren't illegal until you get caught. Sometimes a policy decision is made, we're going to continue with this until, you know, the courts tell us otherwise.
Okay. I just, the only thing I want to make sure of is that, just like you said, there's sometimes you can't do it. I want to make sure that discretion is put in here somewhere. I feel like that's, maybe it's in here and I'm missing it. I just feel like there's some discretion missing, especially when you're talking about having two points of access for 100 or fewer units to, that's off different roadways.
Sure.
I mean, those are, those are very specific points of access that can't be met on every project. So I just want to make sure we have some discretion in here for the, for, for the staff to be able to, to do different things.
Remember at the head of the conversation, I told you that Jones Street is still active and still making law? This change that, that we're talking about happened while we were drafting the code. Okay. Talked about the water pulling, the water extension sewers, the exact same way. We got to figure out, first, we needed to clarify, single lot, non-residential developments are subject to these rules because it wasn't 100% clear. It is now, or will be if this gets adopted. And then we need to continue our discussion with the attorney. Guys are doing great. We'll be done soon. Clarifying open space standards, not required for minor subdivisions. I said that before, and some forms of residential available. This is important. We have revised the requirements for greenway and sidewalk provisions for additions or expansions to existing buildings. Okay? The prior or the current code says if I'm doing an addition or an expansion to an existing principal building and there's no sidewalk or there's no multi-use path or there's no greenway, but that, those would be required under our policy guidance. As drafted currently, if my development exceeded a, a price threshold, I had to put the sidewalk or the greenway in. And that threshold was 50%. So if I'm doing something that's worth more than half of the building I'm working on, if I'm doing an addition and it's more than half of what the building is worth, I got to put the sidewalk in. Got to put the greenway in. Okay? Careful discussion with your economic development staff has yielded a stance of 75%. Okay? So this is a softening of the requirements yet. It's also encouraging redevelopment and infill in some ways. Okay?
And this has nothing to do with rezonings, right? This is just applicable for all cases.
Yeah, this is just, I'm building a building. I'm, I'm coming in for.
Swear this my last question.
I mentioned the riparian buffer standards before. We're trying, we, we tried to, we had, we kind of went off the deep end and we're kind of reeling it back in a little bit. And that's what we've done with the standards in section six 12. You see a lot of blue there and, and just a little bit of red. So we're trying to simplify. Wall signs. Uh-oh, I've got some overlap on my slide there. Apologize for that. So we needed some clarity about how we determine wall size signage for multi-tenant buildings when the tenant owns more than one tenant space. How does that work? Do I get two signs? Do I get one big sign? How does that work? So we've clarified that it's one big sign instead of two. Okay? Subdivision signs. Staff wanted to know what happens if I've got a great big giant gate or big lions or, you know, statues of liberty or whatever. It's not a sign, but it's part of my entry feature into my development. How do we, how do we calculate this? How do we determine that? And this clarifies that the sign supporting structures don't have maximum areas. They do have maximum heights, but they don't have maximum areas. Okay? So if, if you've got a sign that has serpentine brick walls beside it with waterfalls and that sort of thing, is that a sign? No, it's not a sign. It's a sign supporting structure. It's got a maximum height. It's got some setback provisions, but it doesn't have any ma, in mass, maximum area provisions. We updated the soil erosion and sedimentation control provisions. There were some changes to North Carolina state law. Your engineering director wanted to incorporate those. If you thought the riparian stuff was boring, wait till you get a hold of that. It mostly deals with enforcement and the timeframes associated with enforcement and the town's ability to work with a violator on what's called remission or the, the correction to a soil erosion sedimentation violation. Okay? State law. Couple of minor adjustments to definitions. I talked about that multi-use path thing and getting rid of riparian buffers. That's it, guys.
Okay, I lied. I have one more question. One of the, one of the things I noticed in the packet that I didn't see in here is the, the section about vehicular gates. That, was that taken out?
It was simply moved.
Okay.
We, we had vehicular gates located in the private streets section and vehicular gates could actually be in a parking lot. And so there was some question about, well, can I have a vehicular gate on a parking lot? Yes, you can. But it's in private streets. Well, let's move it out of private streets. And that's how, that, that's why that changed.
So we just removed it completely?
We picked it up and put it in a different location. That's all we did.
Okay.
I know that it's not green and I can't tell you why. Microsoft Word does some things that only Microsoft Word can understand. It showed it as a stricken text, even though all we did was move it.
Because my only, my only concern about having private gates in here at all related to private streets is what happens if the town takes over the private street for, as a public street?
Then the gate has to go.
Okay. As long, as long as it's stated in there, then I'm cool with that.
No gates on public streets. Okay? Okay, so you've given us a couple of good things to check into. I don't, I didn't see, I didn't hear anything come forward that was like a fatal flaw to any of the draft amendments that we've got on the table. But, you know, are there any potential revisions or other additions that you guys would like to incorporate? Now you're seeing the wisdom of waiting until nine 30 to talk about this, right? Just make it end. Make this guy go. I just want to go home. Any, any adjustments, additions? Mr. Liskam?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we recommend the proposed U D O T A one dash 24 amendments for approval by the town council.
I have a motion to recommend, uh, United, the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, U D O T A one dash 24 to the town council by Board Member Liskam. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Board Member Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate y'all's time. It's great to see you. I'll see you in four months or maybe three. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourn.
I second.
Got a motion to, hold on a minute. You got it, you got it in playing, Conrad?
No update, sir.